Alright, it's a six oh two, let's call tonight's meeting to order with the roll call.
Erickson?
Here.
May?
Yes.
Newman?
Here.
Bertzall?
Here.
Finally?
Here.
Large consent agenda here. If you guys wouldn't mind, I think what I'll do real quick, just for the sheriff's time, you guys have any? We'll let you guys speak quick and then we'll jump into our questions.
Yeah, um, I've been gone for a couple of months, I don't know if you guys have anything for us on my north end that time of year with fireworks again. So if you want to email me. Uh, if you guys have orders or anything changed on it.
Yeah.
Just like copies, I can send out there, I'm excited, we had a little bit of confusion last year on it. Thanks if people didn't think it was up to you, so if you send that to me, I'll send it out to the whole office where they have it.
Okay, you good with that Jim?
You guys follow common guidelines?
No, they had their own, they did have their own last year.
Yes.
Like Saturdays and Sundays.
Well, no, ours is a pretty broad window right now, right, it's a.
It started last year, June, but it's only due on weekends, right?
Yes, through the month of like July.
Through the last Saturday after the fourth.
After the fourth, okay. But I think you had different before, like I said, I think we had deputies and outdated ones that were.
Yeah.
Starting out pretty soon.
Yeah, and we did pass some of those ordinance.
Okay.
So we can get your copy of that.
Definitely, email that when you do.
You got it. Which you guys don't have the readers, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Do you guys have reader then?
Um, figure out how to get one. Yeah, we need to figure the logistics out on that one makes sense.
That's on the, uh, so with our office, we'll hire up the us to see if we can get that one to be too.
Yeah.
We'll be handy, even if we have it at the office, we can grab it to bring down.
Yeah, I have an idea.
Tanner, I, I have a.
Hold on Alan, hold on just a second. Anything?
I got a question for you. We've had in the past some fireworks going off where we were wondering, are those consumer fireworks or are those commercial fireworks? Being. Um, being shut off without authorization.
License.
Um, how can we, how can we know that?
I think the line's getting pretty blurred anymore, if you've seen any of them, there are pretty big ones I can buy just from tents, so. I don't know if there, I have a way that where I could distinguish the, I'm sure there's a gram size on it, but.
Might be hard.
That'd be hard, yeah, like I said, there's, there's a lot of ones you can get now are pretty big.
No easy way to know.
Not really, yeah.
That was my question.
Not an easy way anyway, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Perfect, um. Anything going on in town we should be aware of or any incidents?
So I've been gone last couple of months, so not that I know of.
Okay.
Obviously keeping around speeding with baseball starting up and all that.
Yeah.
Yeah. Issue with, uh.
First, first right there, yeah.
First and green.
Yep.
And fourth.
Sent compared the intersection women in the, uh, event more.
I haven't noticed it as much, but I admittedly am a north sider, so. Don't venture south too much. Well, do we need a submit formal request for you guys to be here on July fourth for the parade? Or lead the parade?
For contract?
Yeah, do we need to do something for that for like to lead our parade?
I, I would, I would call, talk to Liana.
I'll say something formally has to be done, if, if they have, you know, minimum people on, they get to a call, they're acting, they'll make it, so if you have something formal sent, they'll, they'll have extra body here. They're guaranteed it, although it's kind of, you know.
Yep.
Have something available.
I think usually we just, we just have people help with traffic management.
Well, come about last year.
Last year we didn't have somebody, right? Last year we didn't, but historically we've always had.
Yeah, I'd say two years ago I thought.
Yeah, he abandoned us for the aims one, I think.
So yeah, I'd say something formal if you want to make sure something's here, but.
Yeah.
You know, you used to have people come up for like traffic before.
Yeah, for fireworks the night before, so. And.
That was for fireworks.
Yeah, that's always good.
Yeah.
Total April hours forty-five, looks like. Twenty-two patrol to town call for service, so appreciate that. Alan, did you have a question for the sheriffs?
Citizen, uh, question, uh, and you, uh, your office oper- operates out of an S O P manual, it's better operating, it's a good manual, you. Pretty have some, how do you determine how to respond to different situations? Yeah, we have all, we have. Okay, so what if you would get a temporary mayor calling you up and say immediately come down here and rest guy at the console? How would you handle that? Go ahead and take that.
We can tell you the question, I didn't pull more than that, but you know.
There'd be a process, we don't have to worry about that, we're moving on. We appreciate you guys being here.
Yeah.
Yeah, for being.
Alright, thanks, thank you.
Thank you guys.
Bye.
Okay, consent agenda, we're jumping right back into that. Uh, lots of items on the consent agenda, I believe Sean, you requested some additional information that was sitting here in the, did you see that?
Yep, I saw it, and we can discuss that later.
There, okay.
Get something for next year before we.
Yep, okay.
Move into that, but, uh, but make sure we're getting feedback.
Alright.
Mark, uh, I'm a budgeter, like, why in future budgets? Uh, bottom of the first page, are we done with? Light industrial, is that ongoing? Let's see if you can interrupt from J E O.
Yeah, we're not completely closed out on.
Okay, alright.
We have some fixed, some stuff to be fixed.
Yeah, there's still.
By the contractor and the bunch list. We're waiting on that. Uh, pool manager, it's good to see background from.
Several years of experience, she has her L G I, her W S I, and obviously her lifeguard.
Okay. There's a note that it says still deciding on other managers and staff, uh, staff totally understandable, other managers is.
Actually, I can, look, I confirmed another one today, just so.
Perfect, so we'll have two managers coming in there.
Yep.
Okay. The one who confirmed today. Who was the one who confirmed today?
Um.
We can follow up on that?
I'm drawing a blank on.
Cause we'll have to approve them on the next meeting.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And Mark rating out it, real sorry that's done now, that's ongoing.
Uh, that's done, that, that phase of it is done.
Water meters mark, just several.
Yeah, the new replace new, yeah, work. You're gonna see probably a lot more of that, cause they're kicking on, you know, coming up creeping on twenty years now, so.
Yeah.
On a lot of them.
Okay.
So. About the lifespan.
Really?
Eight grand for Schneider on sports part.
Uh, probably, yeah.
Don't think all of it, I think the, I think the reference just pulled the first one. Some of it is for general engineering too. And we also had a, uh, invoice for the zoning map that they're updating for us, so I don't know if the reference actually said that.
No, it didn't. It was a sport for.
Yeah, so there was three actually invoices that totaled about seventy-nine hundred.
We had the developer was probably looking at them now.
Being refunded back to the county to be redist. Revenue.
Oh, we call it, really sends too much, it's alright.
Is it, I don't know, this is probably maybe been common, but the dram shop approving the liquor license pre the dram shop, is that kind of standard for us, or?
What is pending dram shop?
They haven't had their insurance approved through A B D site, through the, through the state website. So they've applied, the application's been approved, haven't submitted their insurance.
So we have two liquor license renewals for the next year, are both of those entities up to date with payments to the city? Um. That we should be expecting all the paperwork sent order with the state? And we use payments with us?
Uh, one of them is not up to date with the city. There was some documentation on your table? For that?
That's right, we're about to turn to, obviously it's really quick this time, but we need to have a formal plan, I believe, on how we're gonna get that. Paid and full and keep it paid and full moving forward, for sure.
Pull that one out of the consent agenda, so we can talk about that.
Okay.
We see that one's out.
Which one is it?
That'd be the one for the station.
Yep.
And Jen, you are invoicing now, right?
Yep.
So you are invoicing now?
I've sent them, I've sent them reminders. Monthly, no, but I've sent them reminders.
Are we, did we move to a monthly invoicing? On our bill, do you see those?
What's the payment term on what we agree, I forget on the economic development, I don't think it. Is it specific, does our agreement on the loan say it's an annual payment or a monthly payment or quarterly payment or?
A monthly payment, it's due on the fifteenth of each month. Whatever their, whatever their monthly figures out to be.
Guess I would like honor all of our bills, whether it's these or anything else. I'd actually like to see us go to a monthly invoicing. That sounds like a formal proposal, that's something you can just do, yeah.
I can, I can do it.
Okay.
In all of the, in all of the years we've been doing zero certain loan though, we have never had to send a bill. A monthly bill. I understand where you're coming from, but we've never had to before, everybody has been very responsible.
Yeah, I mean, it's just a fact, there's no money in it, from getting it out.
Right.
It's an appreciation from the city, step forward and, and make your payments.
Yeah.
And I agree.
It builds, I mean, it builds more businesses off that, you know, you get about.
Yeah, that, just in general, it seems like we have received both, we should build one.
Just to clarify, the last time it looks like on this receipt that we were paid was August the twenty-fourth.
It was July payment that was put in the system on August eighth, yes.
Okay.
That's a wrong, but if we pull that up, do we, do you want to move on consent agenda, anybody?
Yeah, we can add that to the new business section, I believe we'd have to add it to the new business section.
Yeah, we'll just pull it and talk about it separately.
We can do that if you want. And final thing.
Tyler?
Understand.
Are you on item number one?
Yes, we're on the consent agenda, just so everybody can follow, we're on the consent agenda here, number two, all that list of things we're discussing. We can approve these in a batch here, so we're just talking through some of those right there, so right now we're talking about. The approval of liquor license for the station pending dram shop.
You're going down through them.
Not individually, we're kind of bouncing around where questions are.
And in the prior meeting notes. Fifth paragraph down, talking about the, uh. Public news of the fiscal year tenancy budget. Said I had questions about the format, it was not about the format or the content. I like that show accurately, so that, uh, even it underscores why I voted nay on that note, since we're off by a hundred and nine thousand dollars.
Oh, one more term, paragraph, sorry, I'm trying to track with you.
But this one down starts with the word in motion, it's a long, number long.
Yep, okay. And then questions regarding format of what was published. I don't know for discussion.
And it was not format, it was a hundred and ten thousand dollar error versus our fiscal year twenty-six.
It was the content, yeah, and I think that, when you said it's the form that calculates it that way, if I remember right, Ken and Jen said.
Yeah, and that's the case, I haven't got back up to sit with Jen and feel through, I've made sure that.
Okay.
Simple cities don't agree with what we said, and some reason is born, it's not splitting up right now.
Um, let me just ask on the consent agenda, is there anything else that anybody feels needs to be pulled out? It may be, maybe. It may make logical sense if you're pulling out the. Uh, liquor license, do you pull out the street closures for the same location and discuss it in holistic, or you're good with the street closures?
Sure, we'll run that too.
Just have a long some conversation here, Sam? Yeah. For continuity?
Yeah.
Okay. Alright, so we did have a motion there, Sue's good with it, we are pulling out liquor license for the station and the street closures at the moment for a discussion in the agenda. Anybody else, anything that they don't want to, they want pulled out of there?
All second for emotion.
Alright, uh, all those signify with the sign, right, all those in favor signify with the sign, I.
I.
Opposed, same sign, and anybody else think? Okay. We'll move now. To our citizens forum, it's, uh, you wrote your name down and you'd like to speak. Um, please go ahead, I would remind you, it's a three minute cap here, and we'll be in.
Well, quickly.
Put you to it, is there anybody else that's signed up to speak that wanted to speak? Any citizen forum, if you're on a topic, we can definitely talk in the topic if you'd like. On a topic or on the citizen forums? Okay, there's an agenda item for that, so we'll, we can address it then.
Yeah, I think I might be looking at them. But I kept looking myself.
Is this what you're gonna talk about, Alan?
Okay, my name is Alan Suvi, and. How are you next?
Six eighteen, you got it.
For the last time we met or something here, it was in the bathroom.
We'll be done.
And so I need to go share this with you, I'll try to get through in three minutes. But after him, a mayor pro, Dr. Ken May would never introduced himself.
Hey Alan, just out of, since we have it in front of us, you're wanting to read it for the public, because we do record the meetings, and so all the meetings are accessible online.
Okay.
Certainly understand, is there more content to than just what you've given us that you'd like to talk about, instead of using your time to talk about this letter that you've given us?
Okay, I didn't understand what you said.
You're reading from what you just handed us, is there other content you want to discuss in the?
No, I just want to read through this.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, and so, the one thing is, he stood under the title there, so people thought that Ken May was Taylor Christensen, lucky he didn't show up on the camera. Okay, um, he did not respect procedures set on by mayor, and determined that his was better than his, if he watched the video. Essentially said, well, I'm the mayor and I'll do what I want, and regardless of it, Mayor Taylor, you know, it's, it.
In those moments.
Ken, Ken, Taylor is your mayor, you know, don't forget.
Alan, we're not gonna debate, this isn't, we don't mean to debate this in the court of public, Ken was the mayor that night, that is what the mayor pro Tim gets to get to.
Let me get through this, okay, he did present the, the presenting, I didn't know that your wife was on the library board, I've never interviewed your wife, I didn't know what she was. Um. Uh, let's see, he threatened to follow the sheriff on me. Um, he didn't use the visual screen like you're used to get, so we had no idea what's going on, it was nice, that's a little hard. Okay, now one thing comes up here is, the, the state law says you gotta do second, third readings. Okay, this, this council decides where we're gonna go to, to hurry it up, so you don't know what's going on, and so we'll, we'll approve it in one or two meetings, three. And so I took a mistake to have. Uh, Ken as motex, and I think we should, we should pay a bell script, and I'm, I'm.
I appreciate the, I appreciate the feedback, and I.
Sheriff.
I know you're frustrated.
Okay.
I, I appreciate the letter, we'll take that into consideration, I would just, uh, know, just from a. From a procedural standpoint, when I'm gone, and, and the mayor pro ten steps in, they, they can choose to run the meeting within the confines of what the law allows and what the code allows, and that's. Well, they can do that.
He'll be gone, they.
Well. It's hard to say, I do have to still pay property taxes, I do have to pay property taxes, I can't still, we're good, Alan. Anyone else, public comment on any topic outside of what's on the agenda? Okay.
Well, I, I just have one quick question, I was really clear on why he pulled the liquor license, or why she pulled that liquor license for the station property?
Okay, yeah, so the clarity there is, uh, the, the station and other businesses in the community have been recipients of our zero percent loan intro, zero percent loan program. And they have an outstanding budget or outstanding balance with us currently. Um, that balance has got to be close to at this point four thousand dollars or so they owe, so Alan, you're done. Um, it's gotta be close to four thousand dollars or forty thousand dollars, so.
Is highlighted.
Oh, the uncollected year to date?
Yep.
But only half of it would be due to this point roughly, right? Well, no, it's almost be full, yeah, so it's about eight thousand dollars is what's owed on the zero percent interest loan to the city, they're bu- behind on that, so I think it's just more about the discussion about are we.
They could just come and pay grand, more, more.
If, that would make us feel a lot better, right, it's a zero percent interest loan, so. And I think we, I think we kind of bill, I think there is a quite a comment about the like process, like unfortunately in this world, we gotta start formalizing stuff a lot more, even the small town. Doesn't always work, so. We may have to just formalize that, but still it isn't, it is balance due, and that's a known balance due. So that's why we pulled it out, we still are gonna discuss it obviously, but.
They have.
And they do have time, I, I think.
Till June twenty.
We're, yeah, we're, we're not gonna, uh, shut them down over the issue, the objective, I don't think that Sue was pers- pursuing. Uh, so we had a sheriff's report, Jen, library report?
Is there anybody else on the list?
There, they, I asked a couple of times, there's nobody sent.
We are in the final two of our school year programs. Um, so our summer reading registration is now open for relearn row, this could all have acquired something, anybody else wants one, they are over by the end of the day. Um, currently, we have over thirty sponsors for our summer reading program, that's what we're excited about, which totals over five thousand dollars. Um, currently as of, when I left work today, we already have two hundred and twenty-five kids registered, um, we don't start till June fifth. Um, and that includes kids from ten towns. Um, so we have quite a range of people coming to Slater this summer, um, as far away as Anchorage, that means. So on, um. For, yeah, so our kickoff is Thursday, June fifth, at six P M at Nelson Park. Um, in April, we had almost eighteen hundred people come to the library, checked out almost thirty-six hundred items. Um, we did walk in forty-nine programs just in April, which was a lot for us, um, that included our Easter econ. And, uh, National Library before we did a lot of extra things, um. And then we had six hundred and eighty-two people coming to those programs, and that number does not include the almost six hundred people that came to the Easter econ, so, um. Over twelve hundred people just in programming for April. Um, staffing, um, we had eleven applicants for those two intern positions, which was a lot for us. Um, all excellent, it was really hard to make a decision this time, really, really hard, um, basically it boiled down to, um. To Slater kids who have grown up through all of the programs and have put in enormous amounts of volunteer hours within programs too. Um, so I'm really happy about the two people that we hired, I wish I could have hired more of them, cause they were just really, really great kids that applied, so really thankful for that. Um, because of just hiring the interns, um, with Danielle leaving, we are, I'm, my plan is to use those interns to cover her hours for the summer. And then I will hire for those spots, um, for once, it starts next year, so we can get through summer before I have to go through that process again, because it is right now, so. Any questions?
Um, great work.
If you had a great raft, you have intern applications, do you need to pick up a third to replace Danielle Towers?
No, I think it was. Yep, yep, thank you.
Thanks Jen, the Easter econ was a hit. We were seven, that's it. Okay, moving down to the fire update, Brent?
Uh, nothing special, we did move forward with fire recovery programs, so that they were presented. Other than that, it was kind of normal, side by side, right, wintering. Uh, and we got our dancing, nothing.
Outstanding. Chad? EMS?
Uh, so we had eighteen calls for the month of April, uh, in the screen, so. So either we had eleven, well, we had fourteen calls and missed three in town. Uh, so we had a couple on straight county, town, town, area, or county townships, and one of the usual, age, county area. There was total sixty-four calls for twenty twenty-five so far. Um, I'm monitoring, been turned in or sent into, uh, manufacturer for its updates, for our seal monitoring, I've got a order from them, so we're still functioning at their level. Um, uh, picked up our stop the bleed kits, or got our, our stop the bleed kits from, uh, Marine Command, that's not one end, set on the table there, you can see it's fairly large. Uh, that stop the bleed kit contains eight individual stop breathing kits and very used for being, if people should be need to, um. They're little, they're just little strap, little things to carry, so, um. To, to replace the individual kit inside is like thirty-five dollars, I thought that was fairly easy to absorb in a budget wise, as far as if we use one or two or something like that. Or use the whole kit, we can do that, um, uh, ones off type of thing, but was it came to mounting these things and having them. Um. They said to replace it's about five hundred dollars for the whole kit. Um. Kind of goes to where the, the city wants to mount these things, one's meant for the library, one's meant for city hall. Um, question is, the access level, I, I mean, in all reality, twenty-four seven access would be great for the public, but with that, the liability that the city's taken on, should somebody come and. Decide you wanna have a stop the bleed kit, or.
I just want our just for our out.
Yeah.
Or whatever else, um, you know.
Yeah, I feel like that was, you know, I was comfortable making that decision, I wanted to have it mounted, since it's taking additional money. So, or sorry, for the city.
Yeah.
So I wanted to get a bit of a problem with the council.
Just a second, hey, Fred, we're just on the updates from the departments on the EMS, no action items on the agenda yet, sorry, I just want to make sure people listening online can hear. We're not muting anybody intentionally.
But I just want to know where the council would like to, I mean, it's one really, the, the responsibility should it, we disappear or get vandalized, you know, that and has to get replaced, and the city has to. Do that, because we signed a, I think with E M A, maybe take care of these things. Where, where's the council feel comfortable with? Do they want twenty-four seven, are they okay with business hours? Um. What do we want to do, I'm also kind of looking at, maybe in the, in the future, there might be a possible. Mounting this on the outside, then a weatherproof case that, yeah, down nine one one, you want to get a code. And stuff like that, kind of like with some A D stuff you can do, um, so it might change over the time period, but. Again, that, that would at least allow you to have something, I think, but I just don't know what the council wants to take on for concerns.
Yeah.
That concerns, or?
Does anybody have thoughts council wise? On that at the moment?
I just, I just wonder if we might not want to have a third one at the pool.
Baseball pool area.
So it's pool and baseball diamonds, they'd be, most of the time the baseball diamonds be used to pool, we'll.
We can, at, at the city's expense.
Yeah.
And then we're supposed, we could most certainly do that, we could also put the A D down there someplace, that type of thing too, I know it's.
It's mounted in the hallway at this pool.
Does one have to be here, is that what you were saying?
One has to be here, one has to be at the library.
And that's because these were given to us, right, these were given to us by the Story County Emergency Management, we, uh, they have a.
Countywide project, uh, event project that's.
Yep.
New state, and the focus first places are on city halls and, uh.
Schools.
And then the schools, yeah.
They did the schools.
School bus is all we keep doing.
And we'll be the only county in the state with every school bus to have of stop the bleed and every school in the county.
Right.
So, some cool work that they're doing up there at the county level from emergency management perspective that benefits us.
Yeah, I just didn't want my.
Yeah.
Just saying, I don't spend five hundred dollars and have to answer to you guys, because I said I'd take care of them and how it's missing.
Yeah, I mean, I wouldn't be entirely, uh, you know, back to the, it brings me back to the camera discussion we had at one point, but you know, to have one in here by the water bill drop off box or something, wouldn't be horrible, um. We just wouldn't necessarily know if there's somebody to vandalize or stole or that, um.
Yeah, I'd value your opinion, you talked to other EMS people, if they put them out in the public. Do petty things happen, or are they well?
Yes, to be born kids.
Well, that, that's my suspicion, I thought maybe there's some respect around health stuff, but.
No, there's no respect, if, if they can get to have people vandalized, we'll see.
But if it's in the front, or the city hall, it's a little bit over.
Alright.
You need to have them, right, send the glass window, for sure. But. Yeah, let's, uh, we can.
They doing anything for awareness, I mean, I just, I'm just concerned, I mean, I don't, I don't know how many people will be aware that they're available.
Uh, they are, well, this month they're doing a, uh, stop the bleed day. Being signed off by the proclamation from the, uh, county supervisors and everyone else, so on the twenty, they're redoing signing. Uh, May twenty-second, it's technically stop the bleed day nationwide, we tried to do something with training last year and didn't have anybody show up, so. Um. We're, we're taking our captive audiences when we can, so like we took fire, um, you know, that's all, we don't have any of this stuff, and, um. Picked up the city workers and, uh, library staff and staff up here as well, see what else is happening.
Um. Yeah.
Mark, in the employee area, you have the highest risk group, but I assume you've already got a comprehensive safety kit in the shop.
We have.
They have my town.
Yeah, that's true, too, true, I guess I give you your truck.
Yeah, I think from this, from this standpoint, I think we should hone in back to where does this kit go inside of this building, because this kit doesn't leave the building. So based on the grant, so I, I would just ask that question first and get that. So based on the grant, so I I would just ask that question first and get that, and then if we think we need to expand or add those. I would welcome a request from. Public Works or Library, or whoever felt, I know the library has one, but wh- whatever department thought they needed access, pool, if we think that makes sense.
It'd be great, but on a pool, I mean, I hadn't thought about the sports complex, having A E D and Stop the Bleed kit out in the sports complex once it gets up and going. The the lock boxes that I've been looking at, put one ten electricity so that they can be. Heated and keep the batteries going, because they're making whole water, whole water and dust to batteries and stuff like that.
So we want this one inside the front door, we want it in between the, in the mezzanine or entryway, what's the council think?
I would say mezzanine.
So it's accessible to the public, but still inside?
No, I'd say inside.
Inside, the locked doors. Yeah, okay, so we can do that for now. Totally diverted them there, yeah. Okay.
And Chad, wouldn't be a bad idea, being checking to what the the, once you get dial nine one one to get it open. Want to take safety seriously, how much it would cost us.
Be great if you have these boxes on the outside of the building, we can have power right to it, give us.
Agreed, I just have no idea what.
Yeah, I think the additional cost is what would be unknown, because you have to run power to them, the boxes you could probably quantify pretty quick.
Yeah, the boxes are probably about the. It's around fifteen hundred dollars for the box.
Well, that would make it. I assume here we have electricity in need.
We would have some organizational aspects, it had to be figured out with the sheriff's office, especially. As far as when they call nine one one, they have to. They have to know like what box you're at, whatever right code and if ones like can work them. When a coach uses, then we have to change the code so it's not out there.
If you think it makes sense, we'd love to hear more about that, uh, to be able to act with an actionable item, if you think that's appropriate as the leader of the EMS.
The public works needs this big, but I think you should at least have one of the small kits. Down there, I mean, if his machinery fails. Something in the shop that.
Yeah, and the public works vehicles, yeah. I think it's a great thought. What else do you have?
I'm not personally helping, I have plans for the in this building, uh, with fire, we're not very organized anything for the building right now. Uh, we're talking about changes, we've been building them to. Size, cost, estimate of all this stuff for that. And the last thing is I gave you all copies of my resignation from uh, my assistant chief, he stepped down just a few days ago. He wanted to. Basically wanted his voice to be heard on his concerns, uh, so he support for EMS and. Uh, how the cities run in other areas, and I said that I would do him the pleasure of hand or not, so I gave everybody copies of his resignation. It's very once gonna hurt, just because uh he's a critical care paramedic, he brings a lot of skills. A lot of training for our apartment, um, we're gonna feel it, and it's it's kind of sad that to lose somebody that that brings so much to your heart.
Yeah, certainly, I think just some of the things in the letter, obviously, I think we are. We are pushing really hard to get to the point where we can do some larger capital planning, comprehensive planning, strategic planning. I don't think there's anybody here that agrees that the current accommodations of the EMS can be and need to be improved. And offer, you know, better facilities, I I I want that to be heard, and I think I can speak. Comfortably for the whole council in the sense that that is a, it's a big priority for us, we need to get that. Identified, working inside of a plan and identifying the sourcing for that and the execution timeline, it it is really important. And don't want, um, I know he's frustrated by that. I think just like other folks here, the projects cannot happen fast enough. Cheap enough, as quick enough as as all of us want them to, but it is. Most definitely in my mind and the council's mind, on the list, needs to be in the plan and in the immediate plan, not the, we hope to have something for you in a decade. Right? And you know that, so.
Good question, sure does understand where we're at, and so do you have a marker up there?
Nope, I don't have the ability to do that, Alan, but I'll, I'll keep communicating to him, we're still talking about the EMS update. We're gonna be gra- uh, gradually moving down that list, so now we'll be moving to, if Chad's all done, the next place we're gonna go is to Mark.
One quick question, okay. If you don't mind, stop after meeting, uh, for a year, I should probably get out and take tours, kind of concerns me something to say. So let me know sometime when uh you're free.
So now we're gonna move to public works here, um. So Mark, how about your updates? Yes, that's public works, yep.
Uh, we're trying to get ready for Memorial Weekend, just sprucing up the cemetery Nelson Park for that event. Um, we will be starting, we have done a little bit at the pool. The boiler is getting shipped Wednesday. So I look for that to be. Probably early next week. And then continue working on that and hopefully fill in next week at some point. Cleanup day is coming up June fourteenth. Uh, as just a reminder, I know a couple of people won't be able to help. Um, and just so the public knows, the tires will be twenty dollars, or appliances will be twenty dollars, tires ten dollars. And seven to noon, is that correct?
So it was advertised, yeah.
I would just say on that topic too. This is part of a broader initiative that we've kind of explored, which is starting with the cleanup opportunity, offering the cleanup days. With the goal down to proceed into some more uh code enforcement relating to nuisance properties, nuisance trees, things like that. If you have a neighbor, if you know somebody that could use the help. But maybe isn't able, I think if we could communicate that, there's obviously great people in this community that would step up and help. Those instances, so if you know somebody and they're willing. Or that they need something, please communicate that, you can reach out to me on Facebook or.
We have a church group that's volunteered.
To to go around. Elderly or or, you know, whatever, to go help. Get their stuff and bring it to us, so.
We haven't done this for a couple of years.
It's been quite a few.
So this is back again, and so there's places that need the support, and so if you know them and you get into a conversation. Don't let the labor be the burden to get in the, the property cleaned up, we can help.
Get a hold of City Hall, you know, then get a schedule or. Get a list, I suppose. Late this afternoon, I got a email from J O on North Lynn, just as a. Estimate, I guess, a cost estimate from J O, it's. You know, basically wide widening the road, putting a three foot shoulder on each side.
Main street to the bike path.
Uh, this is with no moving utilities, no sidewalks, just basically ripping out, put a sub base and then repave eight inches of. Of concrete or asphalt, whatever. Price is about the same. Uh, we're looking at a little over six hundred thousand to do. Just that, now if you wanna add a turning lane or or move, we don't know what utilities would buy, that could be extra, so.
So do they think they'll have to move some utilities probably, or no idea?
This was just.
There there was no locates ever called in to see what was there, this is if everything's. You know, perfect.
I think this was for peace of mind, peace of mind, because it's not engineered, it was just looked at. So it's just an indication for peace of mind, because we know that that's bad.
Yeah, so, I mean, we can look at that and, yeah, we'll, we'll probably have to do something.
You'll patch though, or do something in the.
We've been cold patching, but it's probably gonna have to get cut out a little bit.
Fix that one spot going north of.
Yeah, probably three foot or four foot, whatever, at least by. Yeah, fifty foot, I don't.
That new. Transformer, is that setback far enough, you think?
I think so.
I I haven't paid much attention to think about.
Yeah, I mean, you're you're not adding a lot of roadway, all you're gonna add three foot to that shoulder, maybe the road widens a little bit, but.
Is what that indication was.
So we can, I mean, I like, I, I don't know, that's something more to talk about and pursue. Further, I don't know. That's three feet on each side, correct.
That include.
That is removal. Putting some base and then. Uh, so that's what I know on that, and like I said, I just got that, we have it home. Complex, just to touch base on where we are on that. Um, ASA is done. We are, I'm at to the point where I'd like to get a waterline in. And irrigation on soccer fields. Through I V irrigation. That's gonna be between fifty and fifty-five thousand to do just that. To get our, we would do the waterline, I V irrigation was thirty grand to. To do the soccer field, each ball diamond, after that is roughly twenty-five thousand, that's just kind of what they tell you, you know, give or take. A sewer line will need to be put in at some point, I don't think we're. Yeah, that would be a board in line, so I don't think we're necessarily needing to do that right now. I think a dock would be good and some sidewalks would be the next thing, and Jen has some. Grant money for that, so that'll help do some sidewalks. Around there, from the parking lot to the trail.
That waterline supply everything?
We would put a four inch and. And we would tee off that for the future with concession stand restrooms. And that would still. Supply the irrigation.
So nothing seeded yet.
Nothing is seeded yet. Unfortunately. There is some grass coming, which is just from what we have.
Question, so um, comes at north, back to North Lynn, we have any road use funds? You know, we have, I mean, we get some from the state every year.
Yeah, it goes into the budget, though.
Cause that's what we use to repair.
And by signage and.
Rolling amount in there, that's not a lot. If there is, it's a. Catching up fifty thousand.
This would more have to be. You know, a bomb like we did on.
Yeah, and I thi- and I think the intent is for clarity, I asked Mark to try to size it up so that we had an idea in our head. It's gonna have to fall into our planning process, but I think we all know, because we all drive, and it's gonna have to fall in our planning process sooner than later. So, but I wanted, I wanted to size, I asked him to size it up a little bit, because he can figure out how to use the fifty thousand that we have in the budget this. Year to patch and make it usable for an extended period of time, but. We're gonna be kicking that can down the road.
And for sure, so timeline, is this something that would be able to get on a schedule for next year, or is that further down, or further down the road than then?
No, I don't, if we wanted to move forward with it, I don't, I think. We're in, we're sitting good as far as timing, and you know, for them to go engineer it. And then put it out for bid, you know, maybe what, late this fall?
Is that or late summer? Do you have an idea in your mind when you're thinking about it?
I would think you'd want it on. Spring next year. Hopefully.
Survive the winter.
Hopefully two ten is. Wow, it's still gonna be close.
I think the scope tune is a broader discussion and sort of like strategic planning as we go into that, as we have the new staff member in July, hopefully. Because if we're gonna widen it, I think that goes into questions that I think Craig's asked other people, we've talked about being methodical in planning. Is there a need to make it wider at the intersection for added turn lanes, is it make sense to have sidewalks that extend to Heart of Iowa to Main Street? And I think you'd wanna loop that into the discussion analysis at least. If you're gonna be there, and then secondary to that, I know Craig had emailed, covered us on emails, and was kind of pushing on this grant opportunity for. Transportation. Then you try to fold in with Northland, and you look at the financial. Feasibility and grants available with. Cash and then bonding capacity to figure it out. I think the scope might grow beyond just, we may want to just analyze that. This development's gonna go east of here someday at some point, right, and so. That need to widen now, or does that widen? In a decade? I don't know. So more for discussion, but just for an indication purpose, I I was hoping it was gonna be a far less number and then. Yeah, to just over that and that we could get away with that. Okay, the, back to the irrigation. In what you budgeted for the next year, the current year with left, is that? We, what's your intent, what's your plan there?
My plan would be initially, I would love to get that going, just because it's manageable. You know, obviously. We can, we can get that done, we can get it seated, soccer could be on it next fall, possibly next summer. Uh, summer at the earliest, so. That would be one thing that is just done and off of our plate. So, that is my, that would be my first goal, and on the side of the grants I think Jen got are. That'd be more of a summer. Fall project for us, that has to be used by, what'd you say?
In another, in another year, year and a half. Yep, has to be used by twenty-six.
And then keep moving on. You know, and maybe there'd be money to do, you know, we were hoping to do two diamonds too. That's a lot.
Question, Mark, oh. One, you mentioned the pool. Oh, I know there was a laundry list of stuff that came from Park and Rec and J last year. How are you looking on that list, do we have the money, do you have the time, is there even people that are willing?
Well, we've done some. The lighting is. Uh, ordered, I guess, you'd say, it's on, it's on our electricians.
So you're comfortable with where we're at?
Is it all gonna get done?
No, no, didn't expect that, but you're comfortable that we can make it a reasonable pool, if we get enough funds in the budget to. Get ready for whatever the opening date is.
Sure, I think you said you'll have it open. We'll be on track to open it, but I think the reality is, the pool is. Pool does not, we're, we're living on borrowed time.
Yeah, we're, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, there was the nice things and there was that we have to.
So I think that, that raises the bigger question of how much money do you pour into uh fixing decking and stuff like that.
No, agree, yeah, we're, we won't be doing any, we'll do, there's probably a patch or two in the bottom left to do, and you know, fairly minimal.
Okay, but you're comfortable that we can get it in a serviceable manner, not new by new. Serviceable money.
Operational. Depending on the boil, I mean, the big variable is the boiler.
That it is shipping out.
That's the variable to opening, probably, is that installation being complete and everything, good with that? Which it should be.
Unless it's really warm, then.
Then we can negate, yeah.
Uh, second, you and I talked briefly about odor, if you wanted to update council, in case there's any questions from people. You and I are up to date with the rest of the council.
Yeah, I don't know. Not today, I didn't smell it, I was down here this afternoon, should have been really strong out of the sound.
There's been a couple of days on and off. And so if the council gets questioned, Mark's looking into it. I went down, make tire come like computer noses better mine, and trying to identify which pond is the the greenhouses. Wow, you're right, it's got Eddie's color, there's really variable when it's there and it's not. So you might get some questions, and that's the reason I want to mark up to you guys, in case somebody has questions, we're not ignoring it. We're just trying to.
Really figure out and why.
But I'll put it dramatically better than last year.
Yeah, yep, oh, yeah, I don't think it's anywhere close to that.
Yeah, it's not anything like it was before, but it is noticeable on select sunny days, it's just polish. It's weird.
Run those floors the same amount of time when.
You'll keep an eye on it, and you'll, obviously, you're gonna stay invested in it.
Keep looking, Mark, when things come up, so that we never let it forehand. He lives there too.
Yeah.
For sure.
And last one, I know, Mark, you might tailor both of them, work on it, and I don't know how many people have a chance to get sending them, cause I didn't get it out till late. But I would really like to get a handle on where we stand on the sports complex. For a long term plan, I know we've said that the six point five million, that's not realistic, but it's the only plan I've seen. So, scared the heck out of me, so.
Yeah, so here's what I come, here's what I've come up with, and now this is no labor. So I told you the fifty to fifty-five.
First, I would just say, like any, like any project like this, park wise. Historically, this city is executed on the end, on a staff basis, public works basis. So it's been phased in a sense, and we've executed what we could with what was left over in the budget or what could be saved through that timeframe. So right now, there's, there's no plan to, I don't think there's a formal plan that, hey, we need this on a list, we need to bond for it, we need to do any of that. I think what Mark's main objective is, right now, just for clarity. Is to get grass to get soccer usable.
Yep.
The broader scope of this is going to fall into the strategic conversation about the pool, the project, the community center, like. Everything that is gonna have to be a part of our strategic plan. For that, I think the objective is to get grass out there since we've owned it for fourteen years.
Ideally, if we could get all of, at least the fields in and, and. You know, concession stand and all that, that. I'm not. Yes, it'd be nice, but. We're, we're. Couple of years old from that, I would think.
Right.
But what I figured in infield, fencing, foul poles, restroom concession stand. Uh, you're looking at about six hundred. Sixty-one thousand. No labor. That's just strictly.
Materials today.
That was on a building that is, I talked to Richmond's and he said, for, you're talking restrooms. Most expensive thing you can put in, you know, as far as. It's not a garage. He, he says, I would say two hundred dollars a square foot. They'll cover you.
Right.
It, it is just a lot of little things that, that add up to a bunch. So, you know, do you double that? I don't know, for labor.
Yeah.
I, I really don't know. A lot of the money. I mean, Jen, the grants, I think we'll pay for a lot of sidewalk. But.
And have it be used for that scope.
Yeah.
Well, it seems like there's, looking at what C C L did, it seems like there's people. If that's their thing, they're willing to donate, so it seems like some of those things.
I'm sure there will be a lot of that, yes.
Cash, whatever the case is.
Yeah, and, and Danielle was putting in a grant for irrigation, uh, through Prairie Meadows, I don't know when that one. Um, if, if we get it, yeah, who knows, but. Um. Then I think you pay that towards your, your, a couple of baseball.
I guess that's what I'm looking for is, is something formal of.
Yeah.
This is what we're planning short term, this is what we're planning long term, just so we have.
You wanna, you wanna irrigate it? And you wanna seed it?
Yeah.
And that's within the funds that are.
That, that is just that, I, I think you need your fences and stuff like that for baseball before you go do.
Before you seed it?
Uh, I think so, cause you're just gonna rip it all. And, and we're putting like on the baseball right now, we're, we're probably just gonna put a.
A rye or something.
Yeah, something.
Cover it.
Just to get cover on it.
Okay.
So.
So only put good grass on soccer fields.
Correct.
glorified oats on the ball.
Yeah.
Just erosion.
Just something there. Just waiting to, they are talking chance of rain Friday, so I'm maybe looking to live on this week.
So you're talking the hundred grand this year?
Yeah, and.
Is it before June thirtieth? Or season?
Uh, either.
Uh, so Aces, I'm gonna talk to him because. We're gonna look at doing from where he quit doing dirt work to the High Tressel Trail. So that basically right away, the railroad.
Yep.
Right away. Um. Cleaning that all up and basically ditching it, so that's where our water's gonna contain and then flow to the. To the intake that way instead of tile.
Okay.
So. And it'll clean it up, it'll.
So what are you thinking for this year?
Uh. Like I said, what's your, this year, I guess?
Let's, let's call it this summer.
Yeah, I would say a hundred. Unless A S A comes back with something, then we could be a little more if we wanted to do that dirt work this summer.
Alright.
So I'm hoping to talk to him this week.
Okay.
Well, I won't have a price this week, but.
Alright.
In the next couple of weeks, I should.
Okay. And I, I don't wanna speak for the council, but that is well within what we. Had assigned for budget. It's just, I, I have no clue what the, the big scope of this is gonna be, and I think that's something the council should be aware of.
Yeah, that's why I'm, I'm trying just to keep you abreast of.
And appreciate that.
What we're trying to.
Here, we don't intend here, twenty there, thirty there, and then suddenly we spend a hundred million dollars.
But what you.
Yeah, I, I agree, I agree, but by the same token, you have to accomplish what you can afford, and we've had this ground for fifteen years, and this is the first time we've seeded it. So I think from the perspective of that, it's like the donors of the ground are, I think, ecstatic to see us at least get grass out there.
Yeah.
So I think that is where in my mind, that kinda in, that stops, and as we go into the strategic, we're right on the cusp of. The strategic planning era for the next decade. Hopefully, that will have to be a part of it.
Yeah.
You know, projects over a hundred thousand, two hundred fifty thousand, whenever we decide, we'll have to funnel into our strategic planning.
Right. And I, I don't know much about soccer or baseball either one, but soccer doesn't sound like. When he's the baseball, that's when they get.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, soccer is, you know, some goals and. The water, the water on all of it is gonna help. Soccer and baseball just. Be used more often.
Okay.
You know, they're, right now, they only play.
Yeah.
One season, and then they have to let it sit, to let it recoup. So with water, that will really help. Their. Their process, I guess, yeah.
For the city, do you have other questions, specific questions here for just?
No, that was.
Mark specifically, okay, and are you good on your?
I am, yeah, thanks.
No, there was a question, I put an email also, but. Rock in the alleys. I, I never. Okay. Well, there was one pushback.
There was one pushback, yeah.
Yeah.
But that was a, a unique one, so.
It, it is, and I, I think we have to. Grant. A rock alley to somebody that.
So someone, someone wants the rock alley for usage and somebody doesn't, isn't what the scope is, okay. Jen? Try to be cognizant with time, cause I know we've got a back.
About somebody who was talking about rocking alley, so. I guess that's it. Well.
Okay. Um, I have a couple of updates, I've invited the experts here to share them. Uh, Marquita, do you wanna give us a quick update on our city manager search? Thank you for coming up here.
Well. Um, since Danielle's resigning and that's. Pretty fast. Um, we have an add out or a plan for that?
We do not have an add out yet, no.
I would assume.
Being planned to get out soon. Obviously. Been busy with pool staffing.
Right, right, no, I know that, I just, I'm just. Thinking imperative in terms of keeping the wheels on.
Well, we don't have Kelly anymore, so that, I think when we talked about it before, there was discussion, we didn't, so. And we are. The target, your target date to have a new city manager hired and started is the first or second, first week of July, into the first week of July. Okay, go ahead with your updates.
Next Saturday was the deadline for applications, we had sixteen applicants, so that's very exciting. And from all over, a local, some, you know, here in Iowa, but people from Kansas, Colorado, Nebraska. So generated some really good interest. Of the sixteen candidates, ten of them have city management experience. Which is, that's what we wanted, um, and. Of the ten, eight have more, more significant experience than the others. And um, of those, we would recommend seven for Zoom interviews. Which ideally will be held um, tentatively this Saturday morning. Uh, if that's, you know, still on your radar, so, um, but we can schedule that whenever is convenient for you, but. We, the Zoom interviews are about twenty-five minutes each. And then like five minutes in between typically, and then from there, and it's kind of like, um. It, it gives you a feel, you know, we sort of machine gun rapid fire questions and, and it gives you an idea of number one, how they're gonna sort of. Uh, a little bit of their background and how they handle themselves under a pressured situation. And then from there, we would suggest nearing it down to a minimum of three, but possibly four finalists for the in-person interviews. They would then come in, they would tour the, tour the community, have a public meet and greet on Friday. And then do interviews on Saturday. And typically with the interviews, um, they would be. Uh, with council, mayor and council, of course, and then, um, we always suggest that you incorporate into interview panels. Uh, some, eat staff members, department directors. Um, and some. Community leaders, so.
Okay.
But that's completely at your discretion.
So the first question is, does. There's Zoom, so it could be virtual, is the group available to do that on Saturday or enough of the group?
Can you, can you record?
Record is Zoom?
Yes.
Absolutely.
Good, cause uh, it's Iowa State graduation on Saturday, so. I'm booked, but I don't wanna hold up the process, so as long as I can watch them in interviews, then. Yeah, yeah.
You'll be there?
You'll be at Iowa State graduation.
No, Ken will not be here, Sue would be able to be here.
Oh, okay.
Sean?
I don't think I'll be here either, we have two of them.
Okay.
So, if, if Zooms are this Saturday, what are, what are you looking at? Potentially doing the in-person? I didn't have the Zooms on my.
So is anybody available for this Saturday?
Sue and I. But if we need to, if we need to kick in next week, we can and look at some.
Sure.
If we need to look at two different times or something, you're twenty-five minutes, in theory, seven people, so you're figuring your three hours, three and, what is that, three and a half hours? So we could fund it to try to do two different time periods if we needed, or, and it is, so, I mean, if we're together, great, but if you're. Just logging in to hear the answers and ask a question or two, that's feasible too, so.
I, I assume that your team is gonna lead the interview. As long as I can just hear the person talk. I can live that I don't have to be there. As well, we'll get a shot to talk to him next time.
Right, but at the end of that, there would be a discussion among uh, mayor council of. Who should be invited for the in-person interviews?
But is that be on Saturday?
It does not have to be on Saturday.
If you did them all together, you probably would, but if you split them up, then we'd have to do it on the back end of the second one.
I only meant if we did them Saturday, we could. You know, follow it Monday or. Something.
And, and to your question, uh, the in-person interviews are targeted for May thirtieth and May thirty-first.
Okay. So what do you wanna do for the interview? Do you wanna put it up into two days and try to do that way this dirty week, or you wanna? What would you like to do?
It's the weekend after. The May thirtieth.
I think if we offer essentially.
Memorial Day is the twenty-sixth.
Many from your team are gonna be on Zoom?
Uh, usually we have two on the Zoom. And that's one person to ask the questions, another person just for observation, note taking kind of thing. And then, um, prior to that, prior to the Zoom, we'll send you a packet with all the resumes and all of the questions. And it'll be formatted in a way that will make it easier for you to take notes and such as you've got to.
Is this in the morning, afternoon?
Well, it, it's dependent on your schedule, uh, it would, uh, morning is kind of what I had envisioned. But we can, you know, whatever accommodates your needs.
Is anybody available for half a day?
Cause it won't, uh, uh, the Zooms will just be half a day, that'll only be about four, four and a half hours.
Or can we get away with splitting it into two, two-hour sessions?
You could do that, you could choose to have, uh, you know, like Tuesday and Wednesday of next week or something like that and do. You know, four, three or something like that.
So would the council, if we did a two-hour session on Saturday, Sue and I. And the interviewer is recorded, then you guys would get the copies to listen to. And then there was a two-hour session during the week at some point for the remainder of candidates, would that work for more people?
Yeah, that'd be better for me.
And you prefer evenings?
Yeah, I mean, ideally.
Okay. Ken, do you prefer evening?
Um, does matter.
Sue, do you, this is that following week?
I'm good at. Anytime.
And does the council, does the council care to participate in the interview or care about the recording of the interview to judge that way?
Yeah, I think the recording's fine, I can, I can look at that, so that's, that's helpful.
So for the first round, the recording's fine. So if Sue and I did it four hours and with their staff and. That's good on Saturday, you guys don't care as long as you get the recording. Then what we'll have to do is we will. Then we will have a closed session. Right, Marquita? To just, what everybody saw and choose who feels like the in-person candidates. So we'll need to schedule that in.
So you're gonna shoot for getting everybody through on the.
Saturday morning.
Saturday.
And we'll get the Zoom link to everybody though, so that if you have the chance to get on, you could get, you could participate, or you could stop in, I think, so, whatever.
Once recorded, I'll do.
Then we need a closed session sometime at the next week, post-interviews. To finalize and start picking up the date.
As quickly as possible. After the.
How are people on Monday night?
Um. Monday night is, yeah, that's a.
How are people on Tuesday?
Tuesday is great.
I'll be traveling, but I can zoom in. I'm out, but that's fine, I can send. So we have census, so will you? So we need to post an agenda for Tuesday, the. What is that, twentieth? At six P M for a closed session? That will include a closed session for candidate, review candidate, uh. City manager candidate discussion.
Is that, that's just for council, not department heads or?
That would be just council, cause it's a closed session, right? What's that?
If you can do a closed session.
Yes, you can. Um, and I will have all the documents to you that you need for that closed session.
Okay.
To evaluate the professional competency of someone you're considering hiring.
Is six o'clock good, or does anybody want a different time? Cause some people have busy lives.
Six, fine.
Six o'clock. Alright, I've got it on my calendar, and then at that time, do you wanna, uh, or do you wanna to discuss dates for in-person interviews? If that thirtieth and thirty doesn't, thirty first doesn't work for everyone.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Discussing that time.
We'll pin it down then.
Yeah.
And then you can do the follow-through. And then, okay, so you'll, you're gonna send the. You said you were gonna send something, what did she say you were gonna send?
Well, what I'll do is I'll schedule the candidates, I'll send schedule to you, um.
Okay.
The, uh, in the interview packets, which includes all of their, their resumes. And, uh, the questions and things like that. In advance of the Zoom interview.
And then for, we'll have to have a close, then we'll have a close meeting, you said that you were gonna send something for that, what do you have to send for that?
The closed session forms, they have to, uh, pursuant to Iowa law, each of the candidate also has to request that their interview be held in closed section. So, I'll send those documents, you'll want those for your records.
That's what then allows us to go into the closed session, is the candidate choosing to be in closed sessions. Got it.
And the, uh, closed session forms invented by multiple city attorneys. Um, and in the light of the new court case that was, that came out last year, so.
Okay. I don't know about that one.
It was a court case related to sessions, and so we had to redo those forms, uh. For, you know, to observe that or to follow that new judicial precedent.
Okay. Perfect. Then, alright. You're good, Jen? With the posting, you'll take care of that, so that it's. Cause we'll have to post the meeting, right, and then just identify that the topic is agenda, a closed session. cause we'll have to post the meeting, right, and then just identify that the topic is agenda, a closed session.
I assume there'll be another one, probably the.
Well, we, yeah, June, after the thirtieth or thirty first, we'll have to convene once.
Well, technically, okay, so what would happen is once you select the finalists, we'll have them fill out all of the documentation necessary for us to run credit checks, uh, background checks, criminal background checks, education verification, reference checks, et cetera. So we'll have all of that, those packets done for you on the day that you interview finalists. So that should you wish to on that day, you can enter negotiations with the selected candidate.
So post-interviews on that Saturday, we would go into session as well and discuss the in, the in-person interview results. And we can, we can mess with that if we need to, it does line up to where if we, if we did that the following weekend, their council meeting is the ninth, so.
So you're saying, uh, June seventh?
If we needed, if we needed to do that, then we could, then at our regular deliberation, we could, you could sleep on it and deliberate on the, in a closed session to close out the. I assume that's a closed session too, to pick the person. Then you could do that at your, into your regular council meeting. We'll re, we'll revisit, we'll revisit that when we do the closed session next week. Tuesday, right? We'll pin that date down then. Good, alright, thanks, Marquita.
Thank you.
Um, Greg, I know you're sitting back there, sorry, do you wanna give a quick update? This is an update, the other update just that I had set up for us on the three twenty one Main Street.
The U A Mayor Council, uh, Mayor asked me to come tonight to give an update on three twenty one Main Street. Uh, it's like just a little recap of where we went and where we started in December last year and where we are right now. Um, as you recall, on December twentieth, we released the R and P process for three twenty one. Uh, we had two full process, one with the social media push and also free advertising through news media and contacts between here and also Des Moines. We had, I have to say, very, very strong social media push through our social, uh, pages here for the Slater Business Community and also the community itself, lots and lots of hits, lots and lots of shares, so. That's a very positive, it was also shared through our network on the Alliance, there's LinkedIn, uh, X, Twitter, whatever it's being called nowadays, TikTok, Instagram, uh, and then of course as well through uh, standard email contacts and the business development contacts. We had a press release issued to the Ames Tribune, the Des Moines Register, the Business Record and K C C I. This record ran something on January twenty second, Ames Tribune ran a whole story front page on January thirty first, the Newsbreak app. Um, anyone in here, where is the Newsbreak app? It's an app that you put on your phone. It it's kind of like a vacuum cleaner, it pulls in your local media within a certain mile radius. That brings in your Yahoos, your MSNs, things like that, Slater hit that on January thirty first. And then also as well, the Des Moines Register ran a digital story in February first as well. All told, we had two formal inquiries, a formal tour was done at December thirty first, uh, December twenty third. Uh, former owner of What You Smoking was interested in the facility and Mayor and I took him for a tour of the facility on a very, 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 very cold day. Yeah, uh, took her tour, uh, answered some initial inquiries and then she later declined to proceed with a formal application process, and then there was a general real per for developer out of West Des Moines declined due to concerns in twenty twenty five economy. Um, although it only seems very, very long ago, it was, it was January, there was a lot of concerns on what the economy was gonna do, what was gonna happen with the new administration, there was a lot of uncertainty in the developer world, so, uh, that leads us to here now. I am gonna be pivoting to the task force and bringing it back to them for formal discussion on where we wanna go from here. What I would like, uh, input on just tonight is the Alliance Lo- uh, Lois page. It's a business development page that we put for empty building storefronts, empty lots for development. It's no cost, in fact, none of the things that we've done so far has been no cost. But if you're okay with that, I would like to put the building up itself without the R F P, just to have the building itself advertising for, for developers. Uh, general interest with a link to the city page of the R F P included. If there's just a building opportunity, it tends to draw interest, that'll link straight to your R F P process on the city's, city's later page. And then we can bring him in that as well.
I'm glad to go with that. Get draw some interest in it. We can still turn stuff down, but maybe get some ideas moving.
Um, one of the concerns I had when the mayor stopped me back in April was the concerns on the Doge and the federal impacts to E D A, Economic Development, U S D A. I can tell you right now that no, those impacts and economic development programs are being in- impacted by the, the things going on in T C. Um, they expect a part will be passed within thirty days, if not sixty. Uh, at that time, U S D A and E D A will have full economic development funding, so there's not gonna be any cuts to those programs, so that's also a plus. Uh, another thing too, I just, I promised supervisors I'd mention it, Urban Renewal T I F program, the, that the city's later utilized for the Sportsplex last year for the application process that Jen submitted. That is still on hold pending the legislature and when they finally gavel out and what they're gonna do with property tax. So after, as of this time, the county has not started the application process, so there's nothing to, to apply for us. Technically, we'd already be through the process starting, so we could do the formal application. Nothing has even started yet, they don't know what, how much money's gonna be allocated, what money's available, et cetera, et cetera, so that is on hold until three months.
Once it does start, do you believe it'll be a super fast process to stay in track with having the applications due in July again?
Yeah, I, I think, I think it's gonna be very, very hit hard and fast, um, I think the number's gonna be smaller than we saw last year. I think because they're gonna be very conservative of what they're gonna estimate.
Available?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, but I think they're gonna keep it at November timeline, cause you and I both know that they like that.
It's got it, well, it's gotta go through that whole budget process.
With the Story County budget process, it has to be November when we do it, so. It's when the time comes and you're one community, one application. So just to be absolutely clear, uh, I know another one of my smalls here in Story County tried applying two and we had to pivot to just one. One per community. Any questions?
Make sure.
Right, if you have any questions, let me know, and then I will get the information up on Lois. Um, any inquiries, I'll put my information in City Hall, so if anything does hit here, please let me know, if anything hits me, I'll let you know.
And don't be objected to he, Greg, putting on that other site.
Go ahead, can you have a question?
We had, we had been on a calendar for a bus tour kind of a thing and that fell off, is there any more?
The supervisor tour, that is being scheduled in two weeks, that's what we're, we're planning on do it, we didn't wanna do it next week, um.
Do you know the date yet?
Uh, we're looking at Friday.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So what's that play out to be?
So two weeks from this Friday.
June sixth, thirtieth or?
May thirty.
Is your tentative date?
Hit on Iowa State, and we didn't wanna hit high school graduations and, um.
Memorial Day.
Memorial Day weekend, the, the county staff starts taking, rotating vacations, so, uh, we think we gotta lock down for May thirtieth, it'll be in mourning. There'll be a situation where we do a tour, groundbreaking, everything here, and then we'll do something with the county staff here at City Hall too.
All the supervisors.
All supervisors.
Okay. So when that's formal, will you let me know, so I can let council know?
Correct, because they wanna also hit this, we'd see the progress on the childcare facility, they wanna do the groundbreaking of Sportsplex and celebrate that. They also wanna see your housing projects in your downtown that Chris did. I promised them bourbon and cigars, so some of them might show up for that too, so just give me a shout out there too, I'm gonna be there, they come or not.
Yeah, please let me know if, when it gets pinned down. Cause we, yeah.
That is our target date.
We've been trying to do that for a while. Awesome.
Alright.
Okay, we'll move into our, uh, first item here unless anybody had a question or.
Yeah, I didn't realize, I thought we were jumping ahead of these guys to get out of here, so I didn't have a chance to ask if Jen had any questions on.
Oh no, she's had her updates, go ahead, quick, if you want.
You guys saw the sheet, uh, that you're on your station, um, that is the rollover balancing. And then you can see on the right side, there should be where I say, uh, is this closed, uh, Jen, I would like you to review those. Uh, to see if we can close those, you can see that the balances, a lot of those have been fixed for years. So basically, to me, they look like closed accounts, so. Uh, I've brought this up before, I would really like it's done by the end of June, so that we have clean books going into the audit end. But somebody's been inactive for a year, so it seems like we should get those dollars out of there, so if you could do whatever's necessary, Jen, and have it ready for the June meeting in case there's anything we have to propose.
No promises with staff leaving.
Okay.
Gearing up for pool and spending lots of hours, but I have pool staff that I'm gonna come in and try to sell pool passes, so they can be here doing that, but.
Okay, this, I've been on this for months now, and I'd like to have a cleaner audit than we did last year. So, that's one, but you, if you, there's a lot of information there, but the primary ones are the ones that say, is this closed? Those are the ones to focus, if you look across those lines, you can see what they had a fixed balance and they stayed that way.
Yeah.
I did notice, Jen, that the pool litigation changed by eighteen thousand dollars. Any idea why? That's been fixed for years.
Yeah, it has.
I was worried that that was a, uh, error somewhere.
Off the top of my head, I can't remember what.
You can look into that one, it's an email they sent late, so understandably, didn't see it.
Okay.
Heads up, website's behind on the meeting notes and videos and things, and all the videos are now gone, I'm not sure what happened.
I don't know either.
Okay. So be dang up and look into that, um, I had asked about tap grants, did you have any proposals from council to consider?
No, I didn't get any response.
No, that, that was, no, and I think some of that's I, uh, I think the timeline and the identification, I think it'd be far wiser to be strategic and attack that as we attack Lynn or some other stuff. Versus trying to throw something together last minute and then disqualifying ourselves in a nut, in the next year, cause we get awarded something. Measly, I mean, I, grants aren't a just throw it against the wall and hope it sticks mentality, we gotta be far more strategic on a grant platform.
This has been out there for several months and I don't think that should be something the council does at least have a discussion about. I wasn't saying they would necessarily go through, but the council should have an option, that would be something we're not even, Jen. I don't know if the council thinks.
Well, I think we should have a strategic plan and follow a strategic plan and apply variance based on the scheduling of a strategic plan versus operating from the hip, I think that would make a lot more sense from a gra- grant strategy, and I think we're, we're very close to that objective. Well, nobody else responded, so I, I don't think anybody's, I don't think anybody's losing sleep real fresh at the moment.
Yeah, I mean, I think.
But you gotta have projects, and you gotta have them identified and in the plan.
And I, I, I suggested this back in February, March. So that's my frustration, so if there's nothing ready, then we're obviously not gonna make a basic deadline, but it's, it's a lot of money just to walk away from.
It could be no money too, at the same point.
Could be, but we'll never know if we don't try.
Gotta have a plan.
Up seven hundred fifty thousand dollar. And it's done next year. So, it seems like maybe next year there would be a bigger rush to try to get any funds remaining. Um, are you working on wage adjustments for part-time? This pool staff will start June in the library.
Yeah, we pulled some numbers from around what, uh, what pools are paying for, um, around the area, Ames, Roland, Bankany, Des Moines.
Yeah.
Yeah, they seem to be right in line, so. Yeah, and I'm not sure, I'm not sure I would recommend changing our pool staff wages.
Okay, but there's also a library in Mark, I don't know if you're gonna be part-time to summer or not.
Advertise right now, I'd say.
So I guess I was looking at having that out here. I gotta show you something.
No, Alan, Alan, we're talking.
Need to know this, okay, we jump from here.
We're just, we're just. Alan, 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 please, you're not, you're not helping your, you're not helping yourself, Alan, please. We're, we're just, we're still asking questions of staff, we're still in updates. We're still, it's right there, Alan. Okay, Alan.
I missed, I missed Jen's, I thought we were. So I guess I'm worried about not having things available when we start seasonal staff. So that's why I was checking where we're at on the, on the new wage schedule for part-timers.
Well, if it's not changing, then it'll just go into the resolution with everybody's.
Okay.
For effective July first.
And full-time, you'll have something available next month, or who prepares that?
Full-time for what?
The wage increases.
Uh, yeah, for next month, yeah, for sure, next month.
Okay. Um, you and I talked about the T I F and L M I, can we get that squared up before?
Yep, we have information with the financial advisor and the T I F attorney to try to clean up some payments to our sewer project.
Okay, but I, not just one thing and all of us, we have that squared away for July first also. That, that I guess, you will or not?
When you're talking, you're just talking about all the tip accounts, or you're talking about? Terms of balances, remaining balances and what percentage is L M I?
That's, I got some answers back from the T I F attorney today, so we'll be working through it.
Okay, alright, cause I would like that that's squared away for the audit, cause I don't want a thirty-year old of those. Um. You talked about the benefit allocation, have you made any progress on that, historically, it seems like we're not using the benefit.
The auditor said it would be a nightmare to re-figure that, cause you can only figure things that's not enterprise funds.
But there's a quarter of a million dollars there.
That we're gonna use, that's why we're not collecting it for the next couple of years.
We haven't used it appropriately in the past.
I don't know. Is the right word.
What, what do you mean by that?
We made a budget, we budgeted, we budgeted for it and collected for it, and it didn't, and, and you're right, it didn't get spent.
We did not spend it.
We did not spend all of it, no.
I can't believe that when there was years where we only spent twenty thousand dollars on benefits, including I B R S. So it seems like it's not being charged out to the right buckets, which is why we're building up a new rollover. So I would, I guess I would like more clarity on that, because except in one year, we had twenty thousand dollars, we always should have been spent on benefits. Which is, that's, that's impossible one, cause that includes I B R S, that's, what's I B R S, fifteen percent?
No, it was just health and that, health benefits, it wasn't, it wasn't all benefits, it was just health insurance benefits.
But I B R S is part of that bucket.
So if we could just, yeah, and I.
If you wanna follow up offline to get that clarity, I think it's a fair request for the clarity on what the bucket's designed for, how it's been used and why it's, why it's variable.
And that's in everyone's emails, so I've asked in print and supported the details, right? Um. I guess we'll circle back around, sounds like you have not had an opportunity to talk to Steve Marsh.
I did, have not found him.
Okay.
I got your information on Friday.
Okay.
Yeah. Haven't reached out.
Alright. Uh, Danielle's departure, you said you're working on getting a posting out now? Are you planning on running that past the council list of what we are? Uh, is there any additional support you need in the interim, manpower, council volunteers?
Absolutely, and um, I'm gonna have some pool staff come in and start, like I said, sit here and sell pool passes at the window and while they're, while there's not a customer, they can enter pool passes into the computer. Be kept busy.
Sue, you and I volunteered the past, yeah.
Yeah, so we contact you and see if you'd like, like, take a half day to come in, to contact you. And see what would be convenient time for us to come in and lend a hand.
Sure.
Okay. Cause there'll be water billing that will have to keep going.
Keep going, yeah. Perfect.
Any further things on the email failure, Sue, I think you've got it mistaken again. Any idea what's causing that?
Do I? No, I don't have any idea why it's not gonna, unless her email's full. Mine, I know I have issues when my email gets full, it won't, it won't accept any new, new emails.
Hurry, she got them late the same afternoon.
A month or two ago that we know is a problem, and then I found out through some forward that I missed another one. And you know what, we don't know if we miss emails.
Right.
So, I don't know if we need a second form of communication to say, hey, did you get this email? I don't know what, but it's not good if we're.
Don't, don't we have a tech guy that can research this?
I'm not sure if our tech guy would do that, maybe reach out to Hopescom, they don't. That's all they've ever told me is check and make sure your email is not.
We've found your first task for your volunteer hours.
So can you give me the contact with the tech guy? I'll talk to him.
Sure.
Yeah, cause I've talked to actually.
And then you get, you get the answer, the check to see if it's full.
Yep, and it's not full.
It's, yeah.
And they said they have no. Cause I've checked with them to make sure, and so now it's gotta be more in-depth sleuthing than they can do. Um, the fireworks guy that we said we're not gonna issue a permit, you sent him the certified thing we talked about.
I have not sent him a cer- anything certified.
We should do that, so he doesn't buy fireworks and find out in arrears that he can't shoot them off.
Well, I mean.
We, that was an action from last fall, we said that.
No, no, I totally get it, but we can't tell him he can't shoot fireworks off, just, I want to just be clear, he can, he can shoot fireworks. He's not getting the street closure.
Yeah.
As far as like the commercial discussion.
Whatever we decided last year, I can't remember.
We could be in for the same thing.
He had somebody that licensed, that was licensed, that's gonna shoot them off.
But he needs a permit for that, right?
The guy, the guy is licensed.
We can't control that, bro.
So, but at least follow through on the action we said, so that.
Yep.
Alright, recently, alright, sorry.
We're moving on to the review of the water and sewer rates, uh, debt payment options, Heidi is here, she's patient. Mathematical, all the good things.
Probably an hour later than I estimated, sorry.
You know what? It, it's just fine, it's, it's good to be out on the road, um, I'm, our office is out west from Des Moines, I live in Monty, so I'll probably still have a little bit of time when I'm home and. Uh, I believe the council has a couple of tickets in front of you tonight.
Um Heidi, what my goal is tonight is to talk about um. Of the findings I had, I looked at the water and sewer, um just to see where your rates are at. Where the revenues and expenditures have been and to give some recommendations. I do wanna. On the agenda that you will be making any decisions on, there will be no rate increases. Uh when you do uh go through a rate increase that requires an ordinance change, or you don't have anything like that on your side, so tonight you're just talking about. Uh kind of the findings um and a couple recommendations. And uh welcome any, any questions from uh council city staff, you know, we talked through here. Wanted to talk about uh this city, city of the water first, um. Took a look at the last three, four years of uh revenue expenditures, if you have the packet in front of you. And if you don't have your readers on, I do apologize, I have a lot of numbers on here. Um but I mean, exactly this one, yes, and in the top right corner, it'll say water enterprise time, make sure you hit the right one.
Can you put that up your screen?
Yeah. Just one second, Ryan and I will get it for you, Alan. I know this is a topic you're passionate about.
Uh as you're pulling that up, I'm just gonna talk generally, I take, took a look at the number of meters um that you're billing. For each fiscal year, um and then I take a picture rate structure, um we have a cubic feet structure, so. Every, every meter gets still a certain amount, right now it's twelve dollars and sixteen cents. Um if you have a lot of meter, then every hundred cubic feet that you are billed. That is four dollars and fifty five cents. That's how that rate structure currently is, that's how it has been since, you know, twenty twenty one. Um and so then I take a look at, you know, how the cubic, you know. How many cubic feet overall have been in the past. Um and what that has generated from revenue standpoint. And then what your operating expenditures have been, so um. Equipment, all of, um I will say, all of the water expenditures for um employee. Um Ibers, all of those that are related to the water do come out of the water fund. Um anything that would be capital improvements that are related to water, it it is solely in that enterprise fund. And it funds itself. And then if you do have any debt outstanding or anything like that, the water fund currently does not have any debt outstanding against it. Um we do know that there are in, in the next three to five years, there will be some larger projects, you know, coming up. Um but there isn't anything really um either coming up in the next year or I'm starting to put that in this plan. So we wanna make sure that one, each year that the revenues that are coming in, your operating expenditures that come in, any debt payments, and then if there's any capital expenditures. Um ideally, you want that to be balanced or um building into that fund. You know, building your fund so that you can favor um capital expenditures in the future. You know, since there hasn't been any rate increases since this year twenty twenty one. Um there's been some capital expenditures, there's been a couple of projects where you've used your cash well. Um but just in the last uh few years, you know, you've, you've had a large, you had a large project. Um where you had your cash go from about seven, seven hundred sixty thousand down to three fifty. Um had a, had a good year in fiscal year twenty three where you remained pretty constant. Twenty four and twenty five are are projected that um you'll be at deficits, meaning that you. Um will be drawing down on your cash reserves. Um I'm seeing this. On almost every rate study I'm doing right now, I'm doing about a dozen right now, and it seems like there were some, you know, between all the inflation that has happened. Uh wages, equipment, everything, we're just seeing that inflation is catching up to the water and sewer enterprise funds. Um and so in order to get you just to the point where um. You can continue to do those annual capital expenditures, continue to pay your bills, and you don't want you dropping in. Uh dropping down in that fund, um. I do have a recommendation of um a fourteen percent increase in those rates. So um if you're looking up for fiscal year twenty twenty five. Where you were at four dollars and fifty five cents. Uh for the uh rate for a hundred cubic feet, that goes up to five dollars and nineteen cents. And then uh the minimum bill from twelve sixteen to thirteen eighty six. Um yeah, I know that fourteen percent can sound pretty big. You know, if you would have just been doing like inflationary increases about two and a half percent, actually just a little bit less. Um you, you know, from twenty twenty one on, you'd end up up at that spot, so you know, I wouldn't say that, you know, the fund has been. Over expending yourself, it's really just kind of a catch up to inflation, which is that recommendation. Um I will say that recommendation is split evenly uh between that base rate. And that flow rate. Um certainly, council can um decide that, hey, you know, we want to hit users differently. Um across the board, um put it all on that base rate, all on that flow rate, um there's. Pros and cons with, you know, either of those. Uh pros, when you put it all on that base rate is that it is uh the most stable type of income. You know your number of meters, um you have some slow grow, that revenue is pretty constant. When you put it more on that flow rate, um that's going to be hitting um those who use the water. Um but as there can be years where it's not as much usage, the revenue is not as predictable. So with that recommendation, I've just put it kind of flat across the board for um that fourteen percent. Um I think that there's probably some questions on, you know, what does that mean for each of the users? Um I did just so, um Jennifer helped a lot with this, taking a look at. Um you know, where, where the community is from a usage standpoint, um. Seventy six percent of the commercial uh and industrial users and residential. Um use six hundred cubic feet or less, um and that rate increase is five dollars and uh fifty four cents. Um if you use no usage or any, um in your left hundred. It's about two dollars and thirty four cents, so for the, for the average users, this increase is. Less than six dollars.
Fourteen percent across the board, but just different impact cuz it's their starting point.
Yep.
Okay.
We've done rate increases each year, I thought we did.
We haven't.
We haven't.
We haven't since twenty one.
We did, you know, a really significant rate increase on that sewer.
I think that's why we were trying to keep the water.
I need to keep the water down, so it kind of, kind of pass that.
Right, so it makes sense, it just seems like we do it every year, but it's, it's, and maybe could we do them at the same time? We just had foregone that, cuz our balance is good in the water.
So the long, long-term issue is, we're not, we're not keeping the fund in balance for when, we're gonna face at some point a major capital expense. And we're going to have to bond for it, or we're going to have to extremely adjust the rates. Interior is, we need to keep that savings account healthy enough to do a new water plant or whatever when the time arises.
And this doesn't build in like a large, you know, a large capital payment at this point. However, um if you don't put these rate increases, this fourteen percent gets added on to the additional. You need to do as well, and it just exacerbates that um rate increase that you need to do.
Later.
Uh later, um I'm certainly open to putting in some numbers to build up some impact, but I also wanted to be consistent of.
So the fourteen percent is just to get us to back to square, that's not putting money away for replacement of any sort of capital.
It's keeping your balance, keeping that bond building, you know, building in a, you know, at a minimal.
Just getting repair generators and flush wells, they're.
Operational.
Yeah, and change filters and, and those types of yearly expenses that they can add up. Certainly, if we don't do that, we're gonna be under.
And the fourteen percent is for the first year of implementing an increase, after that, it's a three percent increase.
Yeah, in, I guess not, at this point, since we've, you know, I, my recommendation would be is. You know, for this year twenty six, is to put that fourteen percent in, um. And we know that things are coming, so it's not a bad idea to put our two and a half. Or three percent going forward, because we know those projects are coming, um and to just keep up with that inflation, that's.
Yeah, certainly.
So first off, I wanted to kind of say, hey, we're looking at fourteen percent. To kind of get you to a point where, hey, we're back again, second recommendation would be to put an inflationary increase. Um in place.
A standard practice every year, three percent.
Um I do want to be consistent of, you know, rating reasons to, there's, you know, some, I would say, you know. We're gonna, we're gonna work to, to not spend this much money. Yeah, but I, you know, with the community that you're at, you're growing, you have, you know, we have uh new residence. Uh new residential areas coming in, um. It, it helps to kind of have that, and I would only put maybe two, maybe two years of. Uh of that inflationary increase, you probably should be evaluating um if every couple of.
Couple of quick things for it. You guys can see the shoot.
Is that the recent one that came out?
The first column, there's a ten budgets water, and you can see. And just look at the last three years, uh we'll know about eight grand. Uh which agrees, uh you can see our carryover, that's kind of halfway down the page. Carryover should listen, uh again, it's the same column, eight, ten, the water budget. You see our, our role and our balances dropped quite a bit over time. So yeah, um gotta do the same thing you did of, yeah, we're, we're underwater, underwater. And then the second phase are really fine detail, uh don't worry about all the detail in there, the only really matters is if you go to the bottom left-hand corner. It has a thousand, five thousand, ten thousand, fifteen thousand. In the next column versus water, that's our ranking amongst the towns in Story County. Uh one being the cheapest one, so uh out of the sixteen towns. Worth five, six, six and five, so we're, we're not high on water prices at all. Um so as far as competitiveness. In water, I think we can increase the rate based on, we kind of need to, and also, we're not bad versus our, versus our. Though my two cents, I agree with what she said, I actually would probably say we can go a little higher yet, but as long as we do this on an annual basis, then.
Fourteen and three percent, and this has to be an actionable agenda item on the next, uh, well, I guess we could make that action right now, but does the group wanna? I think the discussion. Is there a discussion that needs to be had further about this? Before we just go fourteen percent, should we hear the second part of the?
You'd have to pass it by ordinance.
Okay.
Yeah, so there has to be an ordinance or.
Yeah, so it'll have to be a agenda item like I thought.
Um and that ordinance does have three ratings, you do, um you are required to have that first one, you can wait. And or the third, you do not have to.
Yep, perfect. Do you wanna go to the second portion of this, the sewer portion for us? So we have full scope.
With the sewer, it was a little bit more fun, um there's. Uh well, so the city received about a million dollars from uh from Shell Dolls, so you have some cash on hand. You do have some debts outstanding, um and you know, wanted to take a look at some options of. If we pay off some debt, can we um. Can we reduce having a rate increase uh by paying off debts rather than having to increase? So I put basically two options in front of you and um one is to pay off two, your two smaller debts. That would basically clear up um about a hundred and ten thousand of payments each year. Um and then I have one other option where it will actually save you a little bit more interest and put it towards the wastewater treatment plant. But because it will save me more interest on the long end of it. Um it only reduces your debt payments by about twenty seven thousand, we'd still have to have a rate increase. So that's where I would want the council to kind of deliberate is, is do you want to pay up lower interest? Um smaller loans to free up, um you know, a hundred and ten thousand. Um or do you want to save more interest, but we're still going to have to work at uh at a rate increase. Going forward, but those are kind of the two things we'll talk through.
Question from your bond side. Uh yes, it makes a lot more sense to pay off the wastewater treatment because it's a higher interest rate.
And it's big, yeah, it's bigger.
We have to renegotiate the new interest rate or how would that work?
So it, so these uh loans are with Iowa Finance Authority through the SRF program. Um so they are payable at um anytime, so you can pay off a portion of those bonds. Um and then they will get you a new, new schedule based off of, you know, the principal that you pay off.
But it's not like consumer, they will keep the same interest rate, not saying, well. That was my concern, is they'll say, well, yeah, sure, we're happy to do it, but now it's gonna be four and a half instead of three.
Right, right, um and so really, if you wanted to go with that option and save more, you know, save the interest. You know, we make sure that they, we can remain those same terms that you're at, that two percent for that waste water treatment plant. If for some reason that, you know, that Iowa Finance Authority does make changes here and there, um you know. I would forego probably my, you know, recommendation to go that route if they were gonna give you, um right now, the interest rate for the twenty years, three oh nine. So same thing, um. You know, took a look at the last few years, um in twenty twenty three, you had really that big rating increase to pay for the wastewater treatment plant. From eight dollars and forty six cents on the cubic feet. Uh to ten fifty, and then the big jump on the minimum bill from fourteen eighty four to fifty dollars. Um you know, when, when this loan was put in place, we had projections on where. Operating expenditures are going to be, um. It's always a little, a few years later, it's always pretty typical that you have to look at it again, um and. And say, hey, where are our operating expenditures? And um between the last few years, I will say, even prior to this data from twenty twenty two. I mean, the operating expenditures just back in twenty sixteen. The operating expenditures have just, not only with, uh they have, have just kind of skyrocketed, so, um. I um wanted to see if there was any that. We could maybe not raise, raise rates like that, and so I think you're in a pretty good position with this cash, um. Did wanna jump down here and say you do have um those three loans you have it, um the SRF in twenty twenty one. Uh which was um. Which was the line that went out on the. And then uh twenty seventeen, which is the one, which is the interchangeable one oh seven, uh which is since there were improvements. And then the wastewater treatment camp, so you're really looking at about five hundred and fifty thousand currently in debt payments that are being paid in the sewer. If um you were able to remove, you know, the, those two smaller ones. Uh which are, I'm glad our principal amounts uh lined up, it's about one, uh one million three hundred and fifty one thousand. Um in principal outstanding after you make your payments in June this year. Um knowing that you have about a million dollars, um we have some fifth funds. Uh that we believe is, that we try to transfer ends, pursue classes, um I looked at using one million three hundred and fifty one thousand. Um to pay off debt um in both of these options. I do want to, did want to note um that we are pretty full bar in fiscal year twenty twenty five. One of the questions is, how do we get, how do we make sure we're within our covenants? We're a little bit too far into the fiscal year for twenty twenty five, put in a rate increase and have revenues get high enough. To get you back into that, that covenant for fiscal twenty twenty five, but once we make any adjustments um to pay off debt. Um you should be back in, in uh in that covenant, staying within those. Staying within those covenants.
By the covenant, you mean a hundred and ten percent?
Uh we'll do, uh if you want to look in detail here, but you'll see that there's a lot of different capital expenditures, just the and bond proceeds coming in based off of the projects. We, I did see that twenty twenty five, your operating expenditures did shoot up, actually, pretty big debt, so can we work with. Um with Jennifer to talk about some of the expenditures and and Mark to see that we do expect that some of these expenditures are gonna go down due to engineering. Um easements and then uh even some wages um to kind of get a low level number going forward. Um in order to kind of get you. The level operating expenditure kind of going forward, completely, which about two seventy um going forward after this.
So does that account when you guys talked about that, I know since girls went and put this in, and this was. Newer, they have kind of nurtured it quite a bit for us in terms of replacement of hearts and different things like that. They paid for a lot of that, it's like almost just good faith, their warranty to keep it.
Yeah, and and talking to them, that doesn't seem like it's gonna move yet.
To back to us, you're saying?
Correct, um where we spent a lot of time was finishing that building and.
Yeah.
And stuff like that, runtime expense.
Right, yeah. But you're saying we don't have full comprehension on ongoing operation.
No, we don't, so there is, yes, there, at some point, we're gonna have to buy a belt or or, you know, something. But. This year, I don't know what that.
But at the same time, this is their showcase.
Yeah.
They may continue that for several years.
Right.
Certainly.
That's what they have.
No, I just wanted to clarify.
And most of those items are gonna be within our vegetarian capability.
We don't know.
Yeah, you don't know. I mean, if you're gonna go change thirty belts, then that's gonna take a big hit. Right, I mean, if you have something like that, then there's worse problem. I mean, you're gonna have a bearing every now and then, or or a chain, something like that.
Because just consensus wise, I'm 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 in favor since we're gonna look at possibly a fourteen percent, if you know what I mean. I, just to give you an idea of where we're going for for future agenda items. I hate paying off low interest loans, but um but I would do just about anything to not increase our sewer rates, so I think that's that's where I would be leaning. Especially if we're gonna look at a water rate increase of potentially fourteen percent, so.
Seems logical, Sheldon gave us a million that they owed us for a capital project. And you're borrowing and you're using three hundred from TIF funds of some sort, or three, almost four hundred. So, so we need to have both of those.
Only I differ on Ken is if we can do the the big loan for the wastewater treatment. If we can do that, that's the highest one we have.
Right, so what we, yeah, what you look at is actually paying off, uh it's about three and a half years early on that. Um so that one is set to be paid off in in twenty forty two. And so basically, in order to save up, save the most interest, you'd pay off three and a half years early on that principle. Um and it'll reduce the payments by twenty seven thousand each year, but but then, you know, in twenty thirty eight. You won't have those payments, so you're not going to, it's it's uh you're going to be saving the most interest.
Right.
But you're not going to be seeing that benefit right away versus paying off the entirety of two other loans.
So we can't renegotiate the amortization schedule, you could truncate it, you can't get rid of it.
Yeah, so that would be the most efficient way to save the most money, uh I mean, if you, I mean, you could. In theory, pay off maybe the next couple of years and only pay interest, but you're gonna be saving any type of. So that's where I said, what's the most efficient way for an interest saving, and then also what's the most beneficial to free up? Um with the unknowns of where the operating expenditures may go. You're gonna be bringing up that a hundred and ten thousand to give more cushion to make sure we're staying in that one ten covenant. And you're you're still be saving interest, it's um about a hundred and sixty eight thousand um in interest um by those loans.
Yeah, there's there's definitely savings there, it's just I hate paying off low interest loans, it's the high interest loans. But there's, you can't renegotiate, you can't refinance it effectively like you do with the house, you can't do that with. These kind of.
With these loans, technically, you you can, it's uh they, SRF does take a look at it every ten years and they. They have refinanced their loans, but at this point, there's there's no refinancing happening as interest rates are higher.
We risk a four and a half or five percent interest rate instead of three. Okay.
Yeah, I'm kind of with Ken, let's avoid the sewer rate increase, we do have some ongoing operating expenses we'll realize over time. Let's minimize the impact on water and sewer. Yes, because now we're, when they're hopefully likely to be building more up, correct. Right, we're in the hundred and ten percent covenants and now it's about not, so. Thoughts, I see you, Kirk.
Yeah, I just uh. I don't like being off my wagon from the five interest loan, it sounds like we're.
And to 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 be fair. The both twenty twenty ones are two percent, it's just that the wastewater treatment plant is so much higher. In principle, it is such a bigger loan, but if you pay off the interest, if you start paying off the back end of it, you're saving more interest because it's a bigger.
It's point eight, one point seven five, and three point one, isn't it?
Uh well, so, so um. SRF also charges a point two five percent servicing charge.
Okay.
And so there's this, I add, when I say two percent, it's actually one point seven five plus point two five percent to two percent.
But still, it's one, two, and three more or less.
No, the wastewater treatment plan is two, is two, the high trust hotel is two, and then the twenty seventeen is a one oh seven.
Including the.
Including the servicing.
Jen, you told me from the original documents that this was three, the wastewater was three point one.
Let's say I should the same document, and yeah.
It's on the page you prepared from the, Jen, you went back to the original document.
Yeah, I went back to the original documents.
And it was three point one per wastewater, the big one.
Yeah, I mean, I think we got the analysis here and.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think that's it, I hear what you're saying, and I think that's a different.
Difference on that big alone.
Certainly.
And I think with Ken's proposal, we're giving the financial benefit to today's taxpayers. Who are paying the bills today, so.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, I'm not arguing this concept, the only I'm arguing is which one.
So we'll put that on, we'll put that on the next agenda, uh as far as the pathway on the sewer, I think it's pretty clear on that. That 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 there's somewhat of a consensus on the pay the one. The one point three or one point three and change is kind of the consensus, so we'll look at that from an ordinance perspective. In at the June ninth meeting, and we can dissect it and the table, and we could figure that out if we want, if we change our mind, yeah.
Yes, I'll I'll double check those those loving, I'm pretty sure that we're at that two percent, um and then I will know, we're still looking around those TIF dollars. Um if there is not the, not the TIF funds to get us to one point three five one. Uh I'll work with Jennifer to see if if there's transfers from some of the fund in order to kind of get us to clear both of them. So.
Explain that, because I didn't notice your tip comment. Not getting something, what what is?
There's there are some TIF dollars that should have been paid towards the sewer lift station. That we're working through with the bond attorney, or with the TIF attorney.
Based on trailside development, because the lift station was put in, there was a TIF agreement on that, we should have recuperated some, in theory, is that the global?
And we're just dissecting what's currently in the TIF fund that can be.
Can be, can be used to pay towards the sewer project.
Okay, that's the kind of details I was hoping for. Yeah, hell am I.
Yeah.
And we're 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 close on it, I just, um you know, if we can't get there, if we can't get there, um based off of what the attorney says, we'll find a way to kind of. Shift their old books off.
Perfect. I'd recommend that we put both of the proposals that were recommended by Heidi here. On the agenda for the next meeting is the ordinance form, we can debate and dissect and adjust from that standpoint there at that point and. And get deeper, if there's analysis, anybody feels they'd like to see alternative. The only question I would ask is, when it comes to the fourteen percent increase on um the rates. Would we be out of the norm to tier that based on usage, and so the higher the users paid a little bit higher incremental cost and the lower users. Didn't experience, you know, because our town is full of fixed income retired folks that some are widow, live alone and things like that, and. They're gonna feel the same percentage burden on their household budget as a corporation. In our town in theory. So, so could could.
Yeah.
Could it, or have you tiered it based on usage, so the highest users carried a little bit more of the burden on the largest increase? And some of your smallest users, you tried to, does that make sense?
Yeah, I I do have um some communities that have the tiered system. Um and then there's some that that just like Mark said, is is, you know, instead of tiering it out and complicating the, you know, the system. Is that you shift more towards keeping the base rate the same and then actually the that uh. The the rate for hundred cubic feet.
Goes out.
You just put it more on that than actually the.
Yeah.
And we've we've done that, other years, we've done rate increases, we've sometimes used it on the base, and sometimes we've upped more in the on the flow rate. On low cost. Just to try to balance that from one year to the next versus trying to make it a really complicated system. For totally um every month.
But that's where we're, our issues with the guarantee.
Of the hundred and ten percent, because you can't guess on usage, I get that, I get that.
It's all balancing.
Yeah.
I I would kind of like to, Alan, no, not right now, I I I haven't let anybody speak, Alan. I I kind of personally would like to see what a projection of that nature would look like.
Oh, all on the usage with that?
Yes.
Yeah, certainly.
I would like to see more of the increase beyond usage versus.
Yeah.
Connect fee cost per se.
She's saying leave the connect fee alone and raise.
That's what I'm, that's what, in theory, I would just like to see what that projection looked like.
Right.
I'm thinking about household impact to those individuals in the community that are the smallest users, that are on fixed incomes.
Yep.
Right, fourteen percent, it is fourteen percent.
Right, the other side of that is, we've had a, we've had an enormous cost to the fixed rate to provide a system. And everybody pays towards this, so this is the same, this is the same circular argument.
I get it, but when we start looking at it, it's like, that's not enough, because we, was it the number four, four meters per year we've added?
Yeah.
So our growth rate is quite small, and I mean, you're you're adding, uh what is that, seven, twenty one hundred dollars a year, you're adding. Certainly, I get it's a fixed number.
And I can give you a, you know, another option to just show a hundred percent of what it would look like, I'm not sure if you had a chance to take a look at. You know, what it looks like from a user in.
Yeah, I did, yep. Yeah, I think that's really helpful, um and appreciate that viewpoint.
Good to say, hey, you know, if you use a hundred, your water bill, not the sewer bill. If you use a hundred cubic feet, you're paying sixteen dollars and seventy one cents with that fourteen percent increase, that would go from sixteen seventy one to nineteen point five.
Yeah, certainly.
And it just shows that jump down.
Yeah, I mean. Yeah, I, and did we, I you, I forget, you did say in there that you looked at what percentage of our users fall in each usage category?
Yeah.
I know you showed that.
So seventy six percent um are six hundred cubic feet and below, and that difference is uh.
Seventy six percent of users will be at a five dollar a month increase in period, six dollar increase a month. On usage.
Or no, overall.
Overall, yep, okay, yeah, because you're changing it a dollar seventy, okay.
Yes, I I understand your point, but it's still really hard on the water meter. Sewer is actually expensive.
Yeah, for sure.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
We charge fourteen percent or zero percent, we're not gonna change much.
Like she said, an average of six dollars per.
Yeah.
I think that was common.
Seventy six percent, yeah.
Yeah, so I I guess my bet is I would rather picture keep this as simple as possible, so we don't spend whatever. Increases we get on the count of this. So I'd really keep it as simple as possible, unless you're really a justification.
Is it difficult to throw that project? Okay, then we'll just, we can have that discussion at the next meeting, all right, perfect. We will have that discussion and take public comment at the meeting when we have that on the night, that'll give you everybody time to prepare, okay?
When?
June ninth. June ninth, these will be listed as ordinance, if you have follow up questions for Heidi, you're welcome to email me, I'll circumvent them to Heidi. And get those answered if you have specific questions, for the fees of time, if she's available, I'm gonna totally release her right now, she's got a. A drive to West Des Moines, so she doesn't dictate policy, she provides expertise.
If she gets the right information, she'll.
Certainly, and I'm sure she's uh held to a high standard and susceptible to lawsuit as much as the next person, so.
She's not on your time.
She tries to that.
Be clear, he's not saying you have time to talk.
Correct, you, if you have.
She's got family.
Funnel them through me and I'll get them answered.
This will not be a final speaker.
When can I talk?
You can call her or try to call her office, I'm sure her number is available here.
How did you just say?
If you're, she is paid by us to be here, and so we don't need an hour conversation where the taxpayers are paying for an hour conversation. We want to get your questions answered, but we're gonna have this discussion again on June ninth with more formal. Conversation, we want your questions to get answered. Very good, Heidi, thank you, we appreciate it, we we are gonna do something later, but you'll, we can get you an update on that, scope of that, if we proceed.
Perfect, um.
Okay. Yes. Financing options, perfect. Outstanding, thank you for coming up here, we appreciate your work on this.
So I'm worried, where's something going down? What's worth to take a column on here soon? And then the uh rollover on the kind of the middle page and then the debt position from the bottom, that's the quick summary.
Perfect, so thank you, Heidi, I want to roll into the next agenda item, which is the, I believe, the resolution forty eight. This is the resolution to discontinue Slater EMS service to West Story service area, this is essentially. The uh Kelly proper Chad and north of there.
Right.
I mean, I know there's some varying boundaries, but did you want to just share the, your your EMS group had discussed this, talked about it?
Sure.
Elected, self elected to. Propose this and are looking for support.
This year, as we started uh writing our uh primary response up to the Kelly area, the Kelly responses. Which is going proper north, uh uh pretty much over to the interstate. And then somewhere over in Boone County, then up north by West Lincoln Wayish, uh towards some places out.
Rural, yeah.
Yeah, there's there's buildings out there and and Brentwood area, so it's like.
So the justification, sorry, I'm hurrying you a little bit, but the justification basically that the EMS team feels is.
So so we 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 take on the toll of that, uh there there's toll on the battery, which is as far as responding up there. Um burnout for providers, it was real thing, and we're fired and they also. So uh we we done our part, far as we're concerned. Um but also look at the additional liability that we're taking on responding up there, um that liability would be us, we're obviously driving the city vehicle and responding. Uh to a verdict call up there, we're taking on um. We're adding additional calls to our call volume, which would then also increase our chain from the liability issues there as well. Uh the other things we have concern with is that we're taking our single vehicle out of out of our area, our primary response area, it's also all of our equipment. Uh we've had a couple places where we've had calls same time for our Kelly call and Slater call, maybe we've also had um. Another time over, we're up on the belly call in the state, we're gonna have to get down to a Slater call, so we've had a longer response down there as well.
I would, I would also say too, just one of the things that I think is important that Chad and I have talked about on this is, Mary Greeley sometimes will respond very similar timing to us. So we're not in a, we're not, the objective is not to leave Kelly in a position where they don't have support. So we, we're confident that Mary Greeley's response time is sufficient or equal to what ours is, it is added liability. Yeah. Perfect, yeah, so I, if there's a question, I, Kelly, I think, this would be the step in notifying Kelly of that, but here's the thing. Why do we serve Kelly, why did we, why do we go into Kelly?
They they had a medical. Uh, first on medical review that was running their EMS department, and then they were gonna lose their license because they didn't have the. And stuff done. So they 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 opt, give up their medical license for their service. And that is supposed to be a short term program until we get back and get things established, then they're not getting stuff established. And I had buildings up there and their fire board president said in one of the meetings that they're not going to give the Wiggly MS license back, so. We're just taking on all the. The burden. And we have no contractual agreement besides the.
Making a motion. Yeah. We have a second from Ken, sorry. All those in favor signify with I. Oppose, same sign, extensions.
I think this will get notified and then stay.
Yeah, I said, no, who wanted to come from EMS or do not come from Ted with city? I'm sure you can, I can help you generate what's like the burden concern. I mean, obviously.
That'd be great.
Call for mutual aid or something like that, and Boone County calls for mutual aid will respond. As as a mutual aid, that that brings the word state and the primary burden off of us.
Yeah. It makes sense. I appreciate the team talking about it and making the decision. If you would, just work with Jen to figure out whoever communicates it, the sooner the better. Cause I do think, like you said, there'll be some notification and make sure Mary, you'll make sure Mary Greeley or the dispatcher knows. Yep, okay, so this municipal violent event response covered, this is something Craig brought up post-meeting, uh Sheldon meeting where he heard it talked about, we're insured by the same insurer. I believe is them, so that's what started here. Um, does anybody have thoughts on this? I know uh. We got the packets, we have it in here.
I think it looks like anyways. It sounded good at first, but reading through.
There's a lot more exclusions than there is coverage.
Yeah, anything with a vehicle or golf cart or, I mean, it just, I don't understand what it covers. I mean, it covers very, very little. And then it's not gonna be enough.
Yeah, and it's capped at twenty five thousand person, which if there was a major event, nobody's gonna be satisfied with twenty five thousand dollars.
No, I think it's.
Regardless of what the upward cap is. I would think that that, I would think if you're insured for a million dollars and there was three people killed, that would be spread over three people, not twenty five thousand per feet person. And your million dollar policy, you only paid out seventy five thousand dollars if only three people were hurt by somebody driving a. Vehicle in.
Yeah.
And it does say intentional, where before I had asked the question of the insurance agent, I said, so does this cover accidental and intentional? And I see here on the qualifying, what qualifies, the very last page, what qualifies as a violent event is an intentional criminal act involving a weapon or tool.
Other liability covers accidents, so we're still covered by accidents.
Yeah, we absolutely, yeah.
Yeah. Well, since it's been presented, I'd say we should definitely take the coverage, just for the record.
And then it doesn't. And then it doesn't, like it it specifically exempts anything chemical, so if somebody were to. You know, you just rupture a.
There's four things that it covers and there's.
Yeah.
Two hundred that it does.
Yeah, I'm hearing pretty heavy consensus, so if you guys wanna deliberate more.
Need to. Make a motion.
We just, we're, we're passing on it, right? That's the indication?
Yeah, we don't need.
I don't think we need formal.
That's my opinion.
Consensus not to continue.
Okay, perfect. Resolution, sorry, I'm trying to keep up here on the screen too. Resolution forty seven, so this is the revisiting of the. Community Center CCL uh project.
You got ordinance three oh nine in there.
We do have three oh nine in there, sorry. Yep, ordinance three oh nine, sorry. Um, this is the, we've, we've done the first reading, I believe, and and how we can. Wait, I can't do the third?
Yep.
In practice.
hesitation about waving the second reading, I'd like to give the opportunity to face our now.
Yeah, certainly. Before I wanted to, I just preface, for those that weren't here, essentially what we're doing is we're extending the window of time for bill payers to pay the bill. Because we have been notified by some local residents, longtime local residents, that their bill doesn't come consistently all the time. And they like to get both bills and pay them manually with a check that process. This extends that window to buy the post office more time. To take it from uh here to Des Moines and back to a mailbox. So it's a longer grace period, Kelly.
Yes. It'll push everything back by a week. Right now it's due the fifteenth, it's supposed to be do the.
Twenty second?
Twenty second, yeah.
Theory, so uh it's really just an adjustment to keep up with the change in our post office, unfortunately, so.
I move, we wave the second reading, go to the third.
Second. Hey, all those in favor, we have to roll call this. We'll do a roll call vote here.
Bert's all.
Hi.
Newman.
Hi.
May.
Hi.
Conlon.
Hi.
Erickson.
Hi.
And just to note, that does take effect then for the June first billing cycle, according to what was written.
Okay. Fred, did you get that?
Yeah, I totally.
Did you hear what we said? We're extending the window. Your, your bills better get there on time now. All right, so now, if I have in the right order, now we're moving to resolution forty seven. Okay, so, do I have? Get this scrolled down. What did we have here? Okay, resolution, so I think this is kind of a drafted resolution or a revised drafted resolution. Um, my interpretation and understanding of the last council meeting was we had a resolution on the agenda to pass. We debated, I think there was kind of a motion with direction given on it, so I understood. Through the video and that, that we kind of passed a, we passed the word structure of a resolution to pursue this. Okay, um, I think there was some things about that, if everybody's obviously uh hopefully been aware of it, then. Because I understood it to be a resolution, I provided what is considered a veto legally under the law, that would code Slater's code. That has to be provided within fourteen days from that decision. Um, so first off, if you haven't heard the letter, I just will boil this down to four things that I think have to be determined before any resolution. Or action is taken forward. The first is a finalized building design and understanding the space that's gonna be used. So we've talked and had the concepts of sixty forward thrown in now, but we've not seen any conceptual design to that. Or what that would look like, or how that would play, how that would adjust. Community space or city space, library space. Um, we, the, the last project, I don't know if the council stopped, but there was a project estimate completed in October of twenty four. I got a copy of it from Kyra via email in November. Um, Hinkle bid the project, the engineer gave a price indication. I don't know, that's the last that I'm knowledgeable of the, of the formal price indication, so I don't think we know the full price. I understand the scope of the request to be to get to fifty percent, because that's the mark we think we need to get to, to start on some grant writing and applications. So I, what's the cost of the project, I think was the first thing I wanted to kind of identify, to then identify what percentage are we actually, are we actually getting to the. Percentage we need to, are we gonna find out, oh, that's not enough, it needs to be this. Uh, secondly, obviously, and we've done a lot of work since uh, there's been a lot of activity on this since uh the last meeting, but we've had financial advisors in here. And we've had a bond attorney in here, so I think there is some discussion and clarity around the mechanism that's being discussed to be utilized. Um, and we can touch on that in discussion a little bit, and then I think the other thing that the reso, the other thing in the resolution that it lacked is it had an unending timeline. Um, the scope wasn't clearly defined in terms of what the exact project was gonna be that we were going towards. The timeline was unlimited, and it was, in the discussion, it was said that, well, if we can't get to that amount, we'll change the project, we'll scale the project. Down to what we can raise. In the video. So I think there's a lot of ambiguity in that. I think it would be better to pinpoint and define that first, if that's the direction the council wants to proceed on. As far as this resolution goes. I think on a secondary point, I would just say, the Hinkle quote that I, that I received a copy of at the time from October. It was a bid. The estimate was five point nine million excluding soft costs, which they estimated to be about a million dollars more. Soft costs could include the engineering, the permitting, all those things associated with it, and then interior furnishings, is the way I understand it from the engineer. So the project cost at that point is six point nine nine four million. Um, and so. Try to separate this, cause I know this is a, a topic everybody's passionate about, and I'm certainly passionate about, I wanna clarify. We have data and the reason to support and pursue li- a library, library space, that's a fact. We know that the man's there, we know the space is needed. But the council's action from the last meeting, in my opinion, is to allocate up to two point five million towards the project, which would bring the total funding with fundraising on the sheet that Kyra provided us. In the meeting in March. To, they had one point two million roughly in the estimate of pledges and fundraising and library accounts and that. Two point five would put us at about three point eight million on what the engineer indicated in October is a seven million dollar project. Is that attainable? Can we get to seven million by allocating this two point five million? How much grant money is available? And I've done some research and talked with Jen and that and scope, maybe we can get up to a million dollars. The sheet that was provided to council estimated. That in a perfect scenario with one hundred percent grant awards on all the grants that we'd apply for, we would, we would get close to that million dollars, is kind of the scope. A seven million dollar project, obviously in our world, as we all know, we just talked about inflation and the cost continues to run away from us, while we still have a funding gap. Of over three million dollars. How long will we run chasing that versus changing the scope of what the need is and where this started? Identifying what's accomplishable in a short timeframe, twelve, twenty four months. With city support, with fundraising and with grant writing, can we accomplish the goals that the library has? In our economical the d- design project. To cut out some of the things that have been included potentially, to deliver what the original objective is, and what most of the committee's work has been focused on, which is the. Library, that's the portion that's a library. And I think there's far more economical paths to. Get to the objective of added additional space to expand and continue programming. And so I think that's a thought, and then the last that I would say is, we're moving into a strategic period. You've heard a lot of discussion tonight about a lot of things that are going on in the city. And right now, we don't really have a full grasp on our capital plan and what we have to do, when we have to do it, what we'll be forced to do and what we won't be forced to do. We know that there's issues with the pool, we know we have street projects that could be done, we know we have other things throughout the city that we're gonna have to deal with and address over the next window of time. But we don't have that plan in front of us with the financial guidance to achieve it, with the timelines of when to do it, and we're making a massive decision. I don't think that means that a project that's been validated through data needs to be put on a back burner. But I think it means that we need to be thoughtful in the decision that we make about how to proceed. And we know that inflation's three percent every year. Raising three million dollars through grants and private fundraising, as the committee knows better than anybody, will take years. And so that project cost increasing at three percent a year continues to move that goalpost further and further away. Grimes built a brand new library in twenty twenty one for eight point six million. They received four hundred thousand dollars in catalyst green. We're hoping for half a million. I think perspective matters in some of that stuff, and I think my question to council is, if council decides they want to proceed down the path of pursuing the exact project. As it is, then we need to set that as the scope. And we need to determine what's a feasible timeline to execute and proceed with more timeline date and scope. I would, I would ask council to be thoughtful in their decision regarding if this is the only way to achieve the objective. And if there's not a more economical way that leaves us the ability and the power to accomplish other objectives as we strategically plan them over the next twelve and eighteen months. As we have community meetings to gather that feedback and determine. What the community wants. The community centers from over a decade ago, a meeting that was a decade ago. Is that still the, the wish and the want of the community in, in that survey and an understanding period, or is that not? If we start and continue down the road on that project and the next eighteen months identifies other needs that are greater from the residents than the community center, have we gone down the right path? So I think there's a lot um that goes into it, but I just wanna repeat a few things from the core fundamentals of what my beliefs are on this topic. The library has validated the data that the programming demands additional resources being space. So at any point, I've never been an anti-library person, I'm not a li- against the library, that has nothing to do with it. This is purely about identifying strategy, having strategy, and executing the capital that we do have very methodically and strategically. So that we can stretch those dollars as far as we can to accomplish as much as we can, keep as many amenities in town as we want, services. The quality of our infrastructure, all those things, as many as we can juggling them. And not find ourselves in a position where we made a major decision that then has. A consequential impact to projects that are identified over the next eighteen months in the strategic planning phase. So, no, Alan, just not right now, okay, just a second. So, a lot of thoughts there, and I know there's a lot of people passionate about it. I think the best thing about Slater is the people. I've always said that, I think we all know that, it's the people. I think these are really tough decisions, and these are decisions when I. Ponder and think about these things, it makes me not wanna serve in this role. Because these are really difficult decisions, because there's a lot of people that are emotionally invested and care a lot about this. And I recognize that. And, and I think we can accomplish those goals, it's just the how do we do it? And that's what I think we need to think about a little deeper. On this topic. Okay, with that said, council.
Part of the meeting that we met the bonding attorney and. About bonding capabilities for that um. And had to leave any part of that, but um. One of the parts that is, is the, I think the recommendation, if I'm right, Craig, like, recommend it in the one there um. Is they recommended, she recommended a fifteen year versus there's, you can, you can do this bond on the. Local option sales tax, so loss, if you hear us use the word loss, that refers to our local option sales tax. Which last year was two hundred eighty thousand. Um, we've been setting aside some money for that um that shows up. In, in some of Craig's accounting as, as I think there's seven hundred thousand dollars that doesn't have a specific. Account earmarked in it for that. I think that's where we've been putting it, at least in my mind and recollection over the years from that. Excess loss that we didn't put into a immediate budgetary need in our annual budget. Um. The um, but. So what, I, if I'm, and I wasn't here for this part, but my understanding was she recommended a fifteen year versus the twenty, two on twenty. She, she said.
She went twenty.
The right is twenty. Yep, um. But basically what it does is just re-characterizes that we would use that local option sales tax loss. To commit it specifically to this project versus. Um. Whatever the immediate need is. Um, if we've got excess. Um. The um. Uh. If you take, they're estimating that this year our, our loss will be three hundred thousand, that's what the state estimate is. For that, if you take um, and I think they recommended using, only committing eighty percent of that, not committing all of it, and they would write, they would be. Happy to write the bonds for that, um, and that I think we need to discuss a little bit, because it starts to get into a conflict of interest if they're the ones that are advising us. And the ones writing the bonds, and they. They uh refer to that in some of the literature without, but. Um. So if you, actually, if you take that just at the, at the um. Um. Three hundred thousand dollar of loss level, eighty percent of that is two hundred and forty thousand dollars per year. If you took that times, and I used fifteen, because that was. What information I got, that's add actually totals to three point six million over those fifteen years. Um, did that for twenty, I didn't do that calculation.
Four point.
She, she did a quick calculation with an existing interest rate of, I can't remember, she uses four and a quarter, four point six five. And she got, she came with two hundred twenty nine thousand, and she gave her two point nine million. The, the other thing that I, I did a little bit, that got out to ten years, um. Partly because I ran out of patience and time for numbers, can you imagine that? Um. And I, I looked at what our increases have been in local option sales tax, I used a five percent figure, cause our local option sales tax has gone up. Usually that much or more. Uh, over the last several years. In ten years, that same eighty percent um using the figures that we have already. From past history, it just in ten years makes three point one. Um, by that five percent increase in lo- local option sales tax, that's not guaranteed. Um, obviously, if the economy goes, takes a big dip, but um. So it actually looks like this would raise significantly more than the two and a half million. And that's my understanding, when they write the bonds, you're committing the loss, not an endpoint of how much you're actually borrowing. Um, you're committing that money to it. And if there's more money than that, that comes in, um. We can apply that even after the bonds are paid off. Um, for what they sell the bonds for, is that? Is that correct? Is that?
I'm not sure how you do, deal with any of the excess.
Okay.
Or if it stops once the project.
Well, my understanding, cause we have to make.
Probably stops.
Cause one of the things that requires the, the vote for us to do is to change. The usage of that local option sales tax money from going to our general fund. From going to our general fund to. To commit. A percentage of that, and they're suggesting eighty percent only.
A maximum of eighty percent, yeah. A maximum of eighty percent.
That that go to, to this as a project. And if you did that for twenty years. That would mean you could bond for a lot more money. But. But then you tie yourself, then you really rope yourself into that. For twenty years, I'm. I feel more comfortable with that fifteen number, but and the fifteen number, like I said, gets you to somewhere between. Three point six and.
So you're saying, you're, you're, you're uh saying. Do fifteen years and give three point six million to the project.
Think your figures are not including.
Is not, it does not include the.
No, it's just rough math, which is fine.
Very rough math. But it also goes, like I said.
So the two point nine is net interest is what you're saying.
In ten years. Actually, I get to three point one in ten, just with the increase. That I would expect easily conservatively expect to get in local option sales tax over that period of time. And. And so. I mean, with the respect to this project, this project was identified as, as the number one, that there's two things identified. Uh, the last time that was done and it was this. It was a community center because of all the community events that we do in the city and, and the library and the libraries.
You said daycare.
Increased exponential.
Not libraries, the community center and daycare were the ones that came out of the thing, right?
And the day, and the daycare was.
But not the library.
Library, I don't think was identified at the time. Programming going on. That's been a more recent. More recent change for that. But the library itself doesn't, isn't. You're not gonna provide a library big enough to do the amount of programming that our library currently does. So that space would be very underutilized. The rest of the time. So to have these two paired together was why they've done that all along is because. Uh, because you get a lot of usage out of that by the library and you have it for all the community event. That we do, Fourth of July, um tailgate. And, and those kind of things where we gather a large community and. Essentially overtax our fire department. Space that doesn't have the electrical needs for that as well. Any objections to that? Summary of where we, where we were at. In the discussion last month.
That's, I mean, that sounds in line. I mean, the video is out there, the recording, it sounds in line with it. I've watched it multiple times. I would agree that that's in line with it. I, I think the community center was identified a decade ago, though. That's a long time ago. We're about to undertake that same effort. And ask the community, the latest thing we've heard is the sixty forward concept. Fitness concept of some sort. I've heard a lot of recreation. I mean, there's opinion based. I think the data clearly says recent and current. The library needs a space.
I think what I would like to say, my. Opinions about the library, we have fixed this can down the road and down the road and down the road. Our library committee cannot move forward on applying for grants until. There is a commitment of funds from the city. We don't have to give them the money now. But they have to know that there is a commitment by the city to provide a level of funding for a library. And I am ready to do that. We have five million dollars. In our purse.
Minus a million.
Nope.
Minus one point three.
Million dollars. I already minus the.
What's your plan for the swimming pool?
Six point four.
Will the swimming pool close in the next five years or will we be able to keep it open?
I don't know, Taylor.
Should we think about that strategically before we take fifteen years of loss?
You want to put the library on hold, then you need to say that.
Sue, I've never said that. I've never said that.
Then why did you, why did you ask me about the pool?
Because what you, we have tunnel vision on a, on a project right now that could be done more economically. We could find a way to accomplish more space and a commu- and a smaller community center at a more economical price.
Yeah, I don't think it's fair to ask. This is just my opinion. I don't think it's fair to ask our library committee to change. Plans in a major way at this point in the game. I don't think that's fair to our people. If we.
What about the forty-five percent of voters?
Yes, yes, yeah.
The threshold of sixty percent was put in place on purpose.
You're, you're wanting a level of. Can I finish my thought? You want a level of specificity about for the library. And yet you have the exact opposite. Viewpoint about the trailside. Park out there.
I disagree entirely.
You told us tonight, but we, we can't have a plan because we just do it as we can when we have the money come in. We have, we don't have.
I don't think that's fair. That's, that's a, that's a false. Preface of my statement. Mark is accomplishing what he can and the funds he can. And as I looked at Craig and said. The advanced outside of seating will have to go through the planning phase, just like everything else. I said that exactly. The recording will be up. We're all welcome to watch it. The point is, the library can proceed.
You're wanting a, a lot of specificity about the library, which. And yet you, you're not, have not seen concern about specificity about how we're spending money out at the new ball park. I've not seen any data, although I asked for it, about levels of usage of ball diamonds, soccer fields. We have not heard from. Any community members coming into a council meeting to say, this is what we need, this is what we need it.
The park and rec board would love to have you participate. And you would hear overwhelming demand for soccer.
My point is that has not come to council, but we have given them a good chunk of money.
We've given three times that money to the library and rollover funds. Every year, that, it was one year that changed Sue, and it was eighty-eight thousand dollars. That's the only time that rollover funds have been given to that project. And the simple question was at that time, unfortunately, we didn't record those meetings was. Can something occur on that park? If you were to receive these rollover funds? And the answer was yes, and the council voted unanimously unanimously to give the funds that direction.
Just saying.
And secondly.
Specificity, we have not had people come to council and say. We only have two soccer fields in town. We need four.
Agreed.
Heard any of that.
Were you on council when you accepted the gift of the land?
I think it was just before I came.
That land was gifted and accepted with intentions.
I understand.
We have not seen that through, and that started well before any other project. So it's not the point, and I understand we want to make this divisive between sports and library. That's not it for me. It's about accomplishing it all. And the only way to do that is through a strategic plan and planning. We can do that. We can get both. We can have parts of both. We can keep and hopefully save the pool and keep that amenity here in town. We don't have the vision of how to do that right now. But we're talking about using fifteen years of loss. Loss goes into the general fund in our budget, right? How was our, what is our projected, what's, what, how's our budget?
I'm gonna follow up on Sue on this. I don't think it's fair for one person to be attacking one person here. I, I did, I understand that you have the mic, you have the gavel. But I don't appreciate the way you're attacking.
You're just attacking them. You're doing.
Yes, I'm doing. Alan, Alan.
But there are. Five council members and a mayor. And I guess I'm at the point, I've already said the things I needed to say. I support this project. I would be ready to. Move that we move forward with this. With an alteration as I suggested in email. I, I do think that the, the loss is a valid method of getting there, but I don't think we'd be exploring the other opportunities. At this point, I would say. Let's do an half million so that group can get moving. But without.
For what project?
The CCL as it is.
No sixty forward, as it is designed, is the most recent conceptual presented on the March meeting. That's what you're approving.
No, I am saying that the.
Open ends.
That they can come forward with. We will be considered, but they can start moving forward on a project.
What steps will they move forward with after this approval tonight?
To be determined.
They'll be applying for grants.
Which grants?
I don't know. I'm not on their committee.
But while I have given, I have given you all of that information that I have to pay. It's certainly, I don't know what all the grants there are because that's not what I do. But I've given you everything that I know. Today. And in that sheet, that's a million dollars if we get it off. Yes, maybe we don't. But. We had from the very beginning of this project, thought of it as something that we were gonna try and. Do a really big thing for the least amount of city funding that we possibly could. That's still a lot of money, but we're still willing and committed to getting more of it than you are giving us. And have been the whole time.
The three point eight million that we would give to them would not make them eligible for the catalyst grant. So we're earmarking money that won't even hit the benchmark for the largest grant that we're after. The grant requires sixty-five percent of funding in hand. So this timeline is not helping get closer to this, is the point. We can give them the two and a half million and earmark it and spend fifteen years worth, worth of local sales tax today. But the pathway is a very, very steep pathway for this specific project.
But I don't think that the funding that we're committing would be only. Funds that they are using to fit their sixty percent.
No, no, I agree, but they'll be at fifty-four percent of funding with those funds. They'll have another seven hundred thousand dollars to get to. They'll have over seven hundred thousand dollars to privately fundraise before they're eligible for. The grant path, the community facade a grant, grant is not a grant that would apply to this project. There, there's multiple, there's multiple grants, so. We continue to go down the path of a plan. Could we accomplish a project for four million where tonight we can pledge enough money to get to sixty-five percent? And they could begin the design of what that looked like, what would meet the needs, and we could execute something.
Is that part of your resolution?
I'm not proposing a resolution. We're here to have a discussion about this. I detailed the resolution that was passed before because we needed to have this discussion. We're not gonna be at sixty-five percent of funding with what we pledge. It'll take more money from us. So.
While we're on, in the public meeting, I would like to go on the record and say, I reject your premise that I am trying to divide between sports and library. I reject that you said that. That is not what I'm about. My point was about data and specificity of projects. That we use to make decisions about funding and I don't want.
And that's fair.
Mischaracterization.
And that's fair, but we accepted the land before this project came about and we didn't execute. So what's it about? There's many things to do here. We've got lots of projects.
I, I wanted to go on record about my personal views. I am in support of sports and slider and library and slider.
Agreed.
Wanted that on the public record.
I think that's a unanimous, I think that's a unanimous agreement among the council.
I moved. That we accept resolution forty-seven for a fifteen year, well, for a twenty year up to twenty year bond. To commit. Eighty percent of our local option sales tax for that period of time. And then the, the amount of the bond that actually gets let will be determined at the time that we act- they actually issue the bonds. They don't have to be issued until we're ready to draw that money out of the account, as I understand it.
So you're not capping the investment.
There's no cap to that investment. It's how much we make eighty percent of what we get out of loss for twenty years. That's what this resolution is.
Are we gonna put a timeline on? Them raising the remainder.
Um, I think a lot of that will depend on what they, how, what they calculate the, this amount to because.
Yeah, this is the general public will have to pass this revenue on.
This will be, yes, this has to go to a, a bond to recommit this money from general fund to, uh, to this project. Um, but only, that only requires a fifty percent. Instead of sixty percent and it does not. And it does not. Have any effect on property tax. That's my, that's my motion.
To approve resolution, I'm just gonna repeat it. Approve resolution forty-seven. Um, to include. Up to twenty years.
So local sales.
For eighty percent of our local option sales tax.
Yeah, yeah, it's already written into, so I just wanted to make sure that was added.
Yeah, because the, the term in there wasn't in this, wasn't in this.
Yeah, the term is not, no. But to, up to twenty years.
So the local option sales tax hits the general fund today. Right?
Correct.
The annual budget. For this next year or for last year has a shortfall of what? You know it better than anybody.
Two hundred twenty-three thousand.
For this year?
For twenty-six.
A shortfall of that.
Yes.
Is that assuming no local sales tax or is that included and excluded? So if we take the local sales tax away. Then that deficit goes to what? Two forty plus two twenty, four eighty.
Depends on the following year's budget.
But in theory.
Yeah.
If it stayed exactly.
So the shortfall is half mil- just under half a million dollars a year. With five million bucks in the bank. And no strategic plan.
With the property tax.
Which the legislature is pretty close to capping the revenue. It's two percent in the city. So our revenues won't pace inflation. We're gonna widen our deficit. For us, uh, uh, one specific project instead of taking the time to explore more cost-effective alternatives. That accomplish the same objective.
I have a thousand arguments, but I've already stated them, so I'm not gonna do it again.
I'm still in support, um, but I would like to see a timeline where. This is, if this isn't gonna work, if we can't raise that money. And we've got to start over. There's gotta be other options. That's, I mean, I wanna see that big building on Main Street. I wanna. Be able to point, we're not gonna be able to get anybody to build on Main Street. Investing in our town. But if we can't, if the funds aren't there to get grants. I'll only kick this down the curb another ten years. If it's not doable. It's not doable.
I'd accept a friendly amendment to that resolution. You suggest three year, four years.
I was thinking twenty-four months, but I don't, I don't have any idea how a grant works, so I don't know if that's.
It'll take a while. To do the grants.
Grants all have a term on them when that money.
Exactly.
Spent as well, so it all has.
But you, you're not gonna get it all, you're not gonna get it all in one grant your cycle probably.
No, no.
It'll take two years at least to get an app and everything into hope.
Yeah, the timing wise, yeah.
Did ready in twenty-four months? Well, ready in thirty-six months? What are we thinking? I think as long as you have a commitment of the funds, within three years, the project continues forward. If these bonds being like.
Is that fair?
I'd be okay with that.
Is that fair?
If it doesn't, it's always gotta go to vote still. With the loss.
That have to go, that would go this far. It just re-characterizes where the loss.
Yeah, so I'm gonna, as long as it has to go through the public vote and then a three years, if we can't. Hold this off.
This is three years start.
Public vote.
Alan, just wait, just wait.
Yeah, I mean, once they can, once they can start to grant right, I guess. I don't know when that starts. It has, yeah, I'll, obviously I'll have a go pass.
We don't know the answer to that, right?
I don't know the answer to that.
We don't know what a grant.
Characterize before they, it can be counted as money. So three year, at least three years from when, when this, so three years from January one. For keep considerers that will be passed by then.
With a, with a three-year fully funded.
Doesn't have to be a hundred percent. What, what, there's a percentage that triggers when, when. It doesn't have to be a hundred percent before you shovel, right?
And so the, the commitment on the table is twenty years of loss at eighty percent. Up to, for this specific project.
Up to twenty years and up to eighty percent.
So no, it'd be more like five million. Twenty years, four point eight was the total, so interest comes off of that.
With three years.
Three hundred times point.
Four point eight assumes then that, that there's no increase in loss.
Agree, so it'll be a minimum of four point eight million that we're given.
That we're going to investigate this revenue bond and we're gonna move forward on investigating these funding options.
I, I mean, I know, I, I guess, I'm not, I'm not talking about investigating. I'm talking about if we move forward with a. With the bond so that there, we have vote. This November. To re-characterize the loss.
The mechanism that's being used is what's called a pure revenue bond, pure lost revenue bond. It's the re-characterization of the direction that lost tax dollars, local sales tax dollars that come into us that are shared throughout the county. That can come into our. That can come into our, to our bank account can be directed. We're redirecting those to be dedicated towards this project fund up to the eighty percent threshold. The taxpayers have to approve that on a vote on the ballot in November. So by the deadline in, end of August, we'll file so that there is a vote for this issue. On that, it'll be a yes or no vote to allow the re-characterization as we're standing. It'll take fifty percent plus one person to pass. If that passes, then those funds can be redirected. We can then issue as council a bond for those funds in a public hearing. And at the close of that public hearing, if passed, the funds will be directed that direction. So there's no, this, it, the sixty percent that we've gone through, this is not, this is the mechanism that doesn't require that.
But the money doesn't come out of those actual bonds.
Until we issue the bond.
Until, yeah, until we actually take.
Underwrite them.
Oh.
Yep.
Just love to underwrite them. The underwriting stuff, so we don't pay any interest until.
Yeah, we won't start paying interest.
Though the shuttle's already in the ground.
Right.
We think unless we find out grants, we'll have, it's quantifying and qualifying what grants accept as capital. Some will accept as little as a pledge.
But it doesn't have to be, it doesn't have to be.
No, no, we could do whatever. We, you could, that's what I'm saying is the eighty percent is it went from, hey, the proposal was two point five million, now we're talking four point eight.
Yeah.
So the numbers changed as we look at twenty year eighty percent. So now in theory, if this passes, depending on what the projections look like, the project could potentially be shovel ready. With twenty years of loss.
I'm still having for a grant input on it, for sure.
I think the committee is firmly behind that. That's been their statement the whole time.
So Ken, am I hearing that you wanna remove the word investigate and just say would like to?
Yes, that we move toward, that would, that, that this be. If this resolution gets us to the point of, of putting of the issue before the voters in November.
Move forward on.
Characterization change from general fund.
Fundraising. Through local option sales tax, revenue bond.
You have a comment?
You said you think they're behind me. And what the council, or you commit. Millions of dollars. Or you think that committee is.
Funding option.
Willing to fund through other sources.
That's been our commitment the entire time.
That's what you think.
That's what they stated, not I think, sorry, I used the wrong word. They have stated that yes, they will be looking for grants. Uh, they're gonna continue their fundraising. Uh, I believe, and you, you may hear better answers to me. I believe their hope is that if the commitment is there. Some of the people have been sitting on the sidelines will now actually make donations because wow, now it's a thing, not a promise. Uh, so they, they hope some of those people that are supportive of the project will actually make donations.
But I think it's important that we are honest and transparent. This will have a consequential impact on the city's ability to accomplish any other project. It will have to be, because there's no oversight in plan, this will have a consequential impact. Because it will come out of the general fund, we'll have to backfill that general fund, cut costs to balance the budget. Which will then lead to alternatives paths we have to take to accomplish other things over that twenty year period. I just think that needs to be said. It's, it's a will of the council and it's a will of the council. This will have an impact on what property taxes have to be three years from now and five years from now, just the way the legislature does today. This is a significant commitment. And I'm supportive of figuring out the solution as I've stated clearly. This is a consequential decision. For millions of dollars. Hey, tip, yep. Just a second, Alan. Not right now, I'm calling Tiffany. I've been so patient, Alan, and I've been trying to be so kind. Just raise your hand and I'll try to call on you if I'm gonna call on people. But I, I'm very patient with you.
I just want to clarify, so let's say we do eight for like ten years. What was that rough math?
Four point eight.
But let's say the building committee has private donations and has. Funding, great money, and we only need to use one point three, and I'm just throwing out the wrong numbers.
Yeah.
Then that's all that we would use out of that bond, correct? We wouldn't have like, just because it's there doesn't mean it will all.
This commits that eighty percent of our local option sales tax for the bond writing. So if, if you were out, if you're gonna go buy a bond, you wanna know what's the guarantee that this city's gonna pay this back?
Right.
Well, eighty percent of our local option sales tax is up to that, is pledged to, to, to show you that you're gonna get your money back plus interest on that bond that you bought. And that's all we're committing tonight is, is that we would commit up to that amount. Um, to back that bond, but if the, if that, um. As long as they write that bond, it's just for however much money we end up taking out of that bank account that we pay interest on.
Thanks for the clarification.
Yeah.
Yeah, just the one, just thinking of the one thing, just remember, the timeline that's been discussed is it'll take three years to get to a funding source. At three percent interest, nine percent, seven million is now eight million. So the, the need for the cash as the time goes on in the fundraising process will balloon, balloon as well, right? So the four point eight. Today it's two point five, but it, it will grow with inflation. With inflation.
Yeah.
I appreciate that. I understand. Understand.
To Sean's point, why putting a timeframe on that makes sense to you.
Yeah, also, I mean, I don't wanna. Put us at shuttle ready right now either and then my whole. Yeah, committee backs off, so I, I don't know if we can cap at what we're willing, twenty percent up to. Or. I think, I, I guess I, I don't wanna be giving four point eight million to this. For the next twenty years. Right now.
It's not.
I'm not comfortable with that.
It's not.
No, no, you are, cuz you're leaving it open ended to where it could be done.
No, you're playing games with numbers. I'm good with numbers. It is four point eight million if you discount interest and everything else. Ken was doing simple math. He said it, he was just saying X number times, uh, a payment over twenty years. That's not how much money is being allocated.
No, but out of all the.
So let's not play games one way versus the other way.
No, no, that, that is, but some of that money will have to pay interest. The rest of that money will be deployed in capital, so it is, it is four point eight million that the city is taking. To reallocate. We might not realize four point eight million, but we will pay interest in the four point eight million.
If you took the entire sum over the twenty years with extrapolation, correct? But that's no different than saying you just made a statement that this will put us a half million dollar hole a year. No. It's not.
And why is it not? Why does this not?
This adds to the additional. That we can hopefully recoup. We've talked about the ability to recoup.
Recoup what?
Some of the shortfalls we haven't.
How are you?
It's a growing community. We've got how, two housing, we got two housing developments.
Four water meters.
We, we've got a light industrial area that's just been getting started.
But we're, we're.
We've got Syngenta's expanding.
I'm ready to vote.
Did you get? I've only gotten a first. Did you second?
I'll second.
Did you have a comment? Go ahead. I've let others comment quickly, please.
Um.
You don't have to stand up, just quickly.
I wanna be on camera, okay? Okay, the problem is not, okay. I, I think everybody here is in favor of library. It was like motherhood, you know, a lot, my hometown, library makes the community. I was a teacher, I understand libraries. The problem is the government and how we're going about it. What we're saying is those people that voted the library down, they're a bunch of dummies. We have other ways to do it. We could. Three people here can decide this right here. Three people, that's.
It actually takes four tonight.
Four, okay, excuse me, four people can decide. Okay, now, they say a camel is, is, um, was, was designed by a committee. And the city decided where the hump should go in front of the camel or the back of the camel.
Alan.
Put in two cats.
I hear, I hear ya, but I just wanna say.
Who's bringing up that? He's saying we still have to go to a popular vote, you're saying, aren't you? Okay, now, whether that's gonna go or not, is how much trust you vote.
The public will still, the public will still, sorry, let me guys. The, the public, the public will still have the ability at the poll to reject this decision.
That's right, see.
They'll just have, it'll.
That makes it better, and how well you presented, you know, such things like, well, you don't have a.
I, I lost it, sorry.
Option tax, well, explain that to them, if that's gonna go someplace else, if you don't spend on the library. And so the question is, how well the community can trust you that you did the right decision? Is that good?
We're good. We, we, we appreciate it, Alan. I've got it. Fred, did you have one comment?
Hey.
Did you wanna talk?
Yeah. Well, first off, things are on the library and something. I wanna praise our librarian. I think she does an exceptional job and I'm glad she's in sight. So what I wanna do is express a few of my views. And some of the views that I hear from people that come into my place of business. My. My view has never changed. As far as the library and the community center go. I think we have a nice library right now. And I think a lot of towns our size would love to have our library. And, you know, and I hear this from people that come in, uh, you know, I might even ask, what do you think of our library? Oh, I think it's great, you know? And, so. I look at it this way, you know? There are times probably when the library is crowded, you know? But I know there's a lot of times where it's not crowded either. Period. And so my question is, does that justify building a Cosmo Hall, you know? I mean, you, you might have to put up with some crowded spaces once in a while. You know, and I just don't understand, and then the biggest thing I hear. Is. Location, location, location. People are not happy with the two-story building with an elevator on Main Street. And, and I look at it this way. We already have a library, you know, we don't have a community center. I think the city of Slater missed the boat. When the absolute building on First Street come up for sale, the city should have bought that for a community center. Because there was plenty of parking there and it was made an excellent one. They didn't do it. And now it turns in, which I'm glad for, it turned in a daycare center or a childcare center, which I'm great, I'm grateful for that. But I think right now. We, if you watch the news, if you read the paper. You know, the administration we have now is gonna cut funding for libraries. You know, and so there was an article a week or two weeks ago in the Des Moines paper. And it put right in there that the smaller communities, the smaller libraries are the ones that are gonna get hit the hardest. So I'm not so sure that we wanna be doing this right now. I think, I think right now in Slater, we have more important issues than the library. I think we got, we got problems over on Lynn Street by the elementary school. We got, we, we're gonna have to do something with that stretch of the street in there, you know, that's getting bad. We have sewer problems. I hear people come in and they said, I've been to the softball diamond now there to a softball game. They said the smell was terrible down there. And you got people living in that last row of houses down there, you know? I mean, we got other issues. I think we ought to be taking care of.
Yeah. I don't mean to cut you off, Fred, but you're at your three minutes. I'm sorry. We appreciate to hear from you. We appreciate hearing from you. We've got a motion and we've got a second, so we'll call a roll call vote here. I'd like to have. Oh, do you wanna talk, Kurt? Sorry. I don't wanna cut anybody short.
I appreciate, I think of all the people up there, you're the most physical, responsible person in, on the council, being the mayor. I, I applaud you for vetoing it. I didn't think that they could actually do a new resolution this. Week month, I thought I had to wait a month, but. I'm, what I'm hearing is, is. I still, your math is fuzzy, Craig, because we, we have a budget projected shortfall next year of two hundred thousand dollars. And we're taking away two hundred thousand dollars more, so there's four hundred thousand dollars and you're saying we're gonna cut it, we're gonna cut other things. Well, Mark needs to put a street out here before the motorcycle crashes out here. There's lots of other projects that we need, we can't be overspending and then steal from everything else. And I, I, I look forward to the vote. I think this time it's gonna be a lot of, a lot of really. Uh, vote no signs around the community, like happened over a boom. And, and I'm just looking forward to that, so what I gotta say.
Thanks. Anybody else? Did you wanna respond, Craig? Or no?
Nope.
Okay.
Nope.
All right. We got a motion, we got a second. We'll call for a roll call vote.
May?
Hi.
Newman?
Hi.
Erickson?
Hi.
Bertle?
May.
Conley?
Hi.
Kerry's got sixty-six percent. All right, the next agenda item tonight, we have on the agenda is the. Um, final item, which is now an approval of the engagement letter to, to bring Northland Securities in and. Get the financial advice to include receive financial options and services underwriter for the potential, potential issuance of bonds. Thanks for coming.
Yeah, I just mentioned pulling one thing out of the.
Yeah, you're right. I'm sorry. Thank you. Thank you, Ken. I'm sorry. Um, the item that was pulled out of the con, the consent agenda, let's cover that. Let's, let's finish the approval engagement, then go from there. Thoughts on the engagement letter that was recommended there? Uh, I think the annual.
Question. Right now, what we just proved is we're gonna work out loss changes. Do we need to make the bond decision right now?
It has to be made by the end of August to hit the ballot, but I think we've just made that decision that we're, we're going that. Direction. That, I think that's what was just.
But not until we pass a vote.
Uh, we, we can't, uh.
So I, my only reservation is. Uh, doing.
I think.
Are these guys grateful? The new city manager, like these guys, you get better people? I, I don't know. I have not been, I mean, I've been in, opting two sessions, we're in the house. Um.
I think that's a, that's. Well, I think that person will have to lead this initiative based on the direction we've given here tonight and future.
And that, that was my only thing is I, unless this is time sensitive, I'd rather not. Sign on for another, this is for a year.
Northland, you're saying?
Yes.
The current agreement. Got you.
I'd rather not sign on for another year with Northland until. Um, yeah, we have a city manager.
Wouldn't use them for it.
I didn't know that this was a contractual term, was it?
It's not, it's not over, it's not.
I thought this was based on expanding services so we could use on an at-cost basis.
It's not contractually binding.
Okay, so.
It's just saying, it's just giving her permission to her office to spend some of her time doing stuff for the city of Slater.
All right. This is the time.
We're agreeing to pay.
Yeah.
Right, the, the, uh. Issue agrees to pay for all their expenses related to processing of the issue, including but unlimited. This would be the prep work for the, for the bond, which. We'll have to continue even with the new city manager. We'll have to, cuz we'll have to vote in August.
And they could be the potential underwriter, but this doesn't lock us into them as an underwriter.
Could be an issue.
Conflict.
Yeah, conflict of interest issue, we would have to, we'd have to sign off that we understand that that could be a conflict of interest if they do vote, but we don't have to do that at this point.
I just wanna make sure that we do our due diligence on partners, cuz there's places depending on what the new city manager goes for the kill.
Right, but she's already into, I mean, she's, she's already been into our stuff and goes.
Agreed, I just didn't know, as, as long as this isn't a locked in contract for a year. You send my question.
No, basically, this is for her to get paid for any work she does do for us.
Time.
Cuz the last one was scoped, so that's why she, we have to have this one.
All right.
Any more discussion on the topic?
Yeah, second.
All those in favor, uh, uh, Bertle first, Conley second, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, any abstentions? We'll move now, give Jim just a second here. We're moving now back to our consent agenda. We had an agenda item on there. Relating to, um. The station's liquor license and the station's, uh, street closures. Sue, you requested the poll out, so.
God, we got an email, by the way. In the midst of all that.
Yeah, we got an email, by the way, in the midst of all that, from the station, so, I'll check your email.
Well, we, that would actually be, probably we'll have to use that as time text for the next meeting, probably appropriately.
Yep.
Um, but go ahead, Sue.
I guess I'd like to table this, so I need to, I, you, go ahead.
My already emailed, but I would say let's.
Give the street.
I would approve the street closures for the May twenty-ninth and June fourth and whatever, yeah, that's all. Maybe, and probably June twentieth too, to make sure we have time, I, I'm fine with those, because that brings it up to their liquor license date. Their liquor license starts June twenty-second, it's the approval of the liquor license, so like, do the. So we need to approve the street closures at June the ninth. Do we need two separate ones for that, Jim, like table?
Yeah, we wanna table one and motion to.
Yeah, so I'll take care, yeah, I'll take care. What I would welcome is the motion to table the liquor license pending follow-up.
Yep, I'll make a motion to table the liquor license pending follow-up discussion next meeting.
And could that be done in, if our problem's resolved, could that be done in a special meeting? Our closed session, or our closed session meetings, so couldn't open and then close?
You can open, but then you gotta.
You could in theory. We just as well pen it to the ninth.
Yeah.
It won't impact them, right, in theory?
No.
I think the objective is to grant it, right?
Yeah.
It's just to get up to date on.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think, based on what I read there, you want, okay, and.
Did I, that was a motion by.
So we have a, yep, a motion to table the liquor license, a second by Sue for the meeting on June ninth. All those in favor signify with the sign aye. Opposed, same sign, and any extensions, okay.
And then I make a, a motion for approval of street, street closures for shoot, for whatever that is, the streets. For May twenty-ninth, June fourth, and June twentieth for this station.
Also, we have a second from Sean, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, and any extensions. All right, a motion to adjourn.
Uh, quick procedural question, um. What we did last on, on the CCL was apparently a motion and couldn't be vetoed, then we adjusted the resolution. I don't know what we did there, did we?
It was.
Did we write your veto, or is there a veto and we need to?
It was an.
I will not veto the resolution that was passed tonight, I won't veto the resolution. I will not sign the resolution, but it will go into the record unsigned. It doesn't require my signature, after fourteen days it drops into law.
Okay.
Or drops into official.
Last month was technically a, a, an act of, of, it was an act of the council, so he didn't have the, he didn't have the right to veto any act of the council, so.
I just wanted to figure out.
Yeah, the, the will of the council, uh, prevailed there, so I, I don't. I can't veto what's there, so I won't sign it, but it will be the law.
Location that they're gonna run the same legal issue, it's not proper code, that's all we need to do from there. That's all.
Anything else?
Motion to adjourn.
All those in favor signify aye. Opposed, same sign. All right, thank you.